Code, uh, hold on. Okay. No, same thing, nothing is happening. I'll, I'll, I'll try, you know, the whole thing again and see what happens.
Yeah, I had to reboot my computer.
Yeah, okay, I'll try that. Hello?
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 Yeah, Betty Wassman is here.
Hi Betty, it's David.
Hi.
We're just waiting for the folks to get in, the technology's having some issues, so we'll convene in a few minutes once Tony is here and I suppose once there's a quorum, since it looks like it's just me and David right now.
And Terry's up there.
Um, it looks like Sam and Peter are also there, they just don't have their cameras on.
I'm here.
Hi Terry.
Pete, uh, Sam, are you there? Do you have a camera or not yet?
Yeah, I have it, I just, uh, was in the snack. Do we know who caller four is?
There's a quick costume change, Sam.
I did that for you, Ben.
Ben, I want to know how do you move your room from?
Uh, the, the webcam's flipped so that text is displayed correctly, but, uh, so, but I can't stand looking left and the camera showing that I'm looking right.
There you are, Ron.
Kurtz, I can read the text on Kurtz, but if he looks left, it'll look like he's looking right, it drives me crazy.
Can, can you see and hear me?
Yes, I'm on.
Anybody?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Let's see you and hear you, you're just fine.
Yeah. Yeah, good.
I went to log in and it, my screen just went like grayed out, they connected me, but I couldn't see myself and I don't know what, something happened with the power right at that time, or I don't know what happened, but that probably screwed all of you up, because I was the controller. Hopefully Betty, or Tony can back, get back on.
Yeah, we have a quorum, but, um, I will give Tony another minute or two to try to get back on and then if she can't, we can start without her.
Is someone else besides Betty out there on their phone, so we can identify you caller four?
I'm number four. Uh, I'm in for public speaking.
Yes, I know that Betty, I'm trying to get the other person who's number four.
That may be me, this is Mary Brom, town of Killingley.
Thank you, Mary. Ron, did you have to reboot your computer or just finally got through?
I, I did reboot it and got through. I was, I was not able to before I rebooted it.
Hopefully that's what Tony's doing.
John, what do you think we should do? I don't know if you, if Tony has texted you, should we start?
She just texted me now that she can't get in, so I'll, I'll call her and tell her to reboot.
John, I just, John, I just got a text from Al, he's saying he's having a hard time getting in, I don't know why, I assume he was at finance, but he's.
He was.
And he's having trouble getting into this meeting, so I'm about to ask him what the problem is, but I'm just letting you know, he's saying he can't get in for some reason.
Can you tell him to restart his computer and try to get in? David?
I will, I'll tell him right now.
Thank you.
Hey Jack, how are you? I'm about to start, council me, how's everything?
Yeah.
Oh, about my test, yeah. So, um, it's 7:08, John, should we convene in recess? Do you want to get going? What do, what should we do?
I think you could probably convene and, uh, go through some of the items, like approval of the minutes. We could, we could start the introduction of the public hearing.
Why don't we do that, and, um, in the meantime, if, um, it looks like Jamie's on the line or something, if there's a place you want to direct counselors to, who aren't on right now, to try to get on, it looks like we've got everybody but Al, Charlie, and Tony, so we have a quorum. So, um, I guess in Tony's absence, I will call the meeting to order. Um, I'm just going to text Tony right now.
I've texted Charlie, haven't heard back, I don't know what's going on.
So, we will, we will convene the meeting at 7:09, uh, and the first item on the agenda is the roll call, Sarian, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Osberger, Berthelot.
Yep.
Bruder.
Here.
For Tony. Freudman.
Freudman here.
Hotchberger.
Here.
Moran. Sharon.
He's here, but he's muted.
Here.
Shaken.
Here. Thank you, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, there's two sets of minutes on our agenda, the first is the minutes of April 22nd, is there a motion to approve? Terry, if that was you, you're muted. All right, I'm here, sorry about. Tony's here. Hi Tony. Hi there. We have your audio but no camera. Uh, hold on, I just haven't turned it on yet. Come on, camera not connected, oh terrific. All right, well, work on that, Terry was just about to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 22nd. All right.
Make motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, second?
Seconded by Ron, is there any discussion about the April 22nd minutes, any additions, corrections? Seeing none, um, is there any objection? Is there anyone who wishes to vote no or abstain? Seeing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent, the next item on our agenda is to approve the April 27th minutes, um, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second motion by Terry, is there a second?
So move.
I'm back. There you go, Tony, you're back. Uh. Okay. Ron, seconded the motion, you're up. Any comments or corrections on the minutes of the 27th? Uh, anybody opposed to adopting the minutes unanimously, please raise your hand? Or so indicate, okay, everybody's in. All right, next item is the public hearing, there Anne, would you read the call to the public hearing, please?
So, rather lengthy one, did you?
Uh.
Really want me to do that, which I'm happy to, or did you want to waive the reading?
Let's, unless there are no objections, we'll ask the town clerk to waive the, the formal reading, this is a public hearing which has been on our agenda once before, um, and the hearing was held open for a period of time, um, is there anybody who wishes to speak to this motion from the public, or do we wish to hear from the town staff first?
Town staff first.
Carrington first.
It's, uh, thank you Mayor, I'm going to turn over to Linda Painter, and she'll take us through, thank you Linda.
All right, good evening everyone, uh, just bear with me, I'm going to share my screen with you, uh, so that you can, everyone will be able to view the presentation. All right, so this is a little bit of a different public hearing for you, uh, in the sense that we do have to do a staff presentation prior to, uh, accepting public comment, and there are, we also need to take questions and answer questions during this hearing, those are the rules for, from, uh, the Department of Housing, uh, for the Community Development Small Cities Grant Program. So, the public hearing this evening is the first hearing in support of a potential fiscal year 2020 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant application, the Small Cities CDBG program is a federally funded program through the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, federal funds are granted to the State of Connecticut Department of Housing and the town participates in an annual competitive application process. Before I get started, I do want to call everyone's attention, uh, to the process for participating in this hearing, because it is a virtual meeting, we are providing the, at the call-in number as well as the access code and password, so that anyone who is watching at home who would like to, uh, participate, you can use this information, and we have put this on most of the slides, I think there's one where we just couldn't fit it on, so you, if you can't take these numbers down right away, you'll be seeing them throughout the presentation. I'd also like to introduce Mary Brom to the council, Mary is with the town of Killingley, who is serving as our consultant, uh, for Small Cities Program Activities, uh, and she'll be assisting with this presentation, uh, and also available to answer questions this evening.
Good evening.
And I apologize, that went a little bit too fast. All right, so, uh, the first thing that we'd like to do is review the goal of the Small Cities, uh, or this Community Development Block Grant Program with you, uh, and that is the development of viable communities through the provision of decent housing and suitable living environments, and expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. The objectives of the program are, one, assisting low and moderate income families, two, eliminating and preventing slums and blight in the community, and/or three, alleviating existing conditions that pose a serious and immediate threat to the health and welfare of the community. The next item that I would like to cover this evening is, uh, eligible activities, and a lot of what was in the hearing notice that you waived from the town clerk, had to do with eligible activities and funding. So, on this slide, you will see that there, there are several activities, uh, that the state has announced, um, will be eligible for funding, uh, through this grant round, and in this cycle, they are estimating that the, um, available money that they will be awarding is $12 million, towns can apply for monies in the, in these categories that are listed on the screen, so up to one and a half million for public housing modernization, up to 800,000 for housing rehabilitation programs, up to 1 million for infrastructure projects, uh, for example, streets and sidewalks, up to 350,000 for public service projects, and up to a million dollars, uh, for public facilities. Uh, in addition to those activities, uh, economic development projects are also a major category, uh, that's eligible for funding. One thing that I do, would like to note just for the council's information, is that in addition to this annual grant cycle that we're discussing this evening, Congress recently appropriated additional CDBG funding to assist with COVID-19 recovery efforts, at this time, we're still awaiting final guidance from the State of Connecticut with regard to the activities that will be eligible for funding as a part of a separate grant application process for those funds. A few other key facts, we are only allowed to apply for one, uh, activity each year, so only one application can be submitted, and it has to be devoted to one activity, uh, and public funding, the public facilities funding includes construction, reconstruction, or rehabilitation of public facilities and, and improvements, as well as fire protection equipment. A general note on that is you cannot use it for general government buildings unless you're doing, uh, accessibility improvements, uh, for persons with disabilities, so this cannot be used, uh, for example, to do an addition or anything with a, a, it's general government building such as town hall. Moving on. Uh, in terms of what we have been doing with this program, Mansfield has been participating in the Community Development Block Grant Program through, through small cities for several decades, uh, primarily, our activities revolve around housing rehabilitation, we've actually had a housing rehabilitation program since the, uh, 1980s, and we operate that through a, currently through a 0% interest deferred loans to low and moderate income homeowners to help them with housing rehabilitation projects, those loans are due at the time of, uh, sale or refinance. So, in addition to that, uh, there is an attachment to the public hearing agenda item summary, is, which lists the previous funding, uh, that we've received, delete the last 10 grants, as well as some program income amendments, and, uh, so examples of some of the, the other projects that we've undertaken through this program have been improvements to Wright's Village, Holinko Estates, and Juniper Hills Housing, replacement of the senior center roof, and modifications to the family changing room at the community center, and a septic system repair for the Mansfield General Store. So, one of the goals of this evening's hearing is to obtain input from residents and other stakeholders on Mansfield's community development and housing needs, citizens play an important role in this process, uh, you provide possible ideas for needed projects in the community, the types of improvements included in a project, and whether a project ultimately moves forward. You also have input on how a project moves forward, if funded, and an assessment of how the project was completed, your comments are always welcome and are integral to a success, a successful overall project. Uh, in terms of our current activities, just a few more details, uh, we currently have approximately 100 outstanding loans valued at $1.3 million, as those loans are repaid, the funds received are used to assist other property owners, uh, currently due to a significant, uh, repayments that we received in the last year, we currently have over $120,000, and five homeowners that are in the pipeline, uh, with pending projects, we're also anticipating additional loan repayments estimated at $54,000 in the coming year, uh, due to, uh, some of our past recipients passing away. All right. So, moving on to, uh, our proposed application, uh, just to give you a little background of where we started, uh, as a staff, uh, in considering, uh, needs of the community, we initially identified a top priority application to, was, would be to assist the owners, uh, of units at the White Oak condominiums with installation of a community septic system. Uh, for those of you who are familiar, um, that, that development has struggled for many years, uh, with the septic systems, uh, due to the soil conditions, uh, however, due to the, the cost of it, it's not something that they have been able to afford themselves, and these are some of the lower priced units, uh, in our community. So, we spent some time working with the association, as well as unit owners, unfortunately, given the timeframe for the application, as well as, uh, the information that was needed, we were unable to verify that at least 51% of those owners would qualify, uh, which essentially meant we could not prove that they'd be eligible for this application in this round. Staff is continuing to work with the property owners, uh, and collecting, uh, applications for income eligibility from owners and tenants, in the hopes that we can pull together an application for the fiscal year 21, uh, cycle. Uh, additionally, after considering that, uh, we then looked at our housing program in terms of applying for additional fun, funds for housing rehabilitation, uh, however, as I've previously mentioned, uh, this is something where we actually have significant funds available to us right now, so we did not feel that would be a competitive application, and we also believe we, we have the money that we need, uh, through some anticipated repayments to do the projects that we have in the pipeline. So, part of this public hearing tonight is to receive comments, uh, from interested citizens and groups as to a potential application, ultimately, the council has to approve, uh, the submission of an application, and you will be discussing, uh, that later this evening under new business. The application is due on May 22nd, uh, grant awards are anticipated to be made on August 2nd of 2020, uh, and if awarded, the town would have 24 months to complete the project. So, after determining that, uh, the White Oak Project, as well as housing rehabilitation, uh, were not, uh, really going to happen in the timeframe that we had, uh, we considered other needs, and after consulting with the interim town manager and the finance director, and ultimately identified, uh, that, uh, some, there were some fire protection equipment needed, uh, and so what you see on your slide there is the proposed application, which would be to acquire a hybrid aerial and pumper truck, uh, the total estimated cost of that vehicle is $1.1 million, uh, it, it is proposed to replace the existing 2004 pumper truck that is currently located at Station 207 in Four Corners, um, the slide does describe a little bit with regards to the need for that, uh, type of vehicle, uh, I do know that Chief Rayola is here, and I will, uh, let him address any specific questions that the council may have, uh, on why we are proposing this type of vehicle, as well as, uh, the potential staffing, um, that needs that are associated with that. In terms of the overall funding request, um, we are proposing that we request $700,000, that was what we had identified in our public hearing notice, as well as our notice of intent, uh, to the state, uh, so we did not feel that it would be prudent to increase that, uh, even though you, we technically can ask for a million dollars, uh, under this activity category. For the town's contribution, there is $250,000 that it was previously reserved as part of the fiscal year 18 capital improvement budget, uh, and we are estimating, uh, that an additional 200,000, uh, would need to be committed, uh, or, uh, the council would need to, uh, commit to appropriate, uh, $200,000 if the grant is awarded, uh, that estimate is based on, um, again, the estimated cost of $1.1 million for the truck, as well as some grant administration costs, uh, and with that, um, I'm going to turn it over to Fran, so that he can just give you a little bit more of a description as to, uh, why we are looking at this particular vehicle.
Okay, good evening, thanks Linda, um, and, and I think as Linda identified, an opportunity came about, um, and quite honestly, we're looking at replacing the pumper truck, uh, next year for the, for approximately $650,000, that would be housed, uh, at Station 207, um, this concept would be a hybrid truck, in other words, it would be a combination pumper and ladder truck, uh, that would give us, uh, the ability not to have to replace the pumper truck, uh, and also give us the, the capability of having some, uh, ladder truck and, and rescue capabilities, which we anticipate with the growth of the Four Corners, as well as other things that we have in town, are, are a future need. So, in, in my mind, this was an opportunity, uh, to leverage $700,000 towards, uh, $1.1 million, uh, that, uh, in my opinion, is going to be a future need here in the next few years for the town, um, and not have to replace the other truck for $650,000. And that, um, that's pretty much a description of the truck, I'd be happy to answer any other questions related to that.
Are we, um, do you have questions from the council before we go to questions from the public, Linda?
Uh, we actually have a few more slides, so I just wanted Fran to.
Go ahead.
To weigh in, uh, the other one thing that I will note, uh, for this is, is Chief Rayola noted that this truck would be located at Station 207, uh, that is important because that is located in a census tract that meets the low and moderate income benefit requirement to be eligible for funding, uh, through the Community Development Block Grant Program. All right, uh, in terms of how the project would be implemented, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the town, uh, issued an RFP earlier this year pursuant to CDBG program guidelines for consultant services to assist with the grant preparation and management for the, uh, fiscal year 20 Small Cities Grant Cycle, the town of Killingley was selected and will assist Jaleen Woodmansey, our planning specialist, in filing, uh, an application if approved by the council, and if awarded, and managing, uh, that grant pursuant to Department of Housing requirements. I will note for the council that, uh, you did meet Mary in person last year during our public hearing, uh, for housing rehabilitation application for CDBG. The timeframe I noted earlier, so that is shown again, uh, and then one other item that we are required to disclose is that there is no residential displacement, uh, that is anticipated as a result of this application, uh, if you move forward for fire protection equipment, because it would literally be purchasing a fire truck, uh, to go into Station 207, so there's, uh, no other construction or residential displacement associated with that. And with that, uh, we are now on to the public comment portion, and I'm just going to leave this slide up in case anyone, uh, who has not already called in would like to call in and provide, uh, comments, or if they have any questions, uh, for us on either community, uh, development and housing needs, uh, or the proposed application itself.
All right, I, um, can we get rid of the shared screen so I can see everybody who's on the screen? Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may, I, I, I heard from Charlie that he's at, at the meeting, but I don't see his picture, he, maybe he, I don't know if he's really logged in or just thinks he is, and, and, uh, Al says he's phoned in, and I don't know if that's been acknowledged, that he's present.
Al, are, are you on the phone somewhere? Charlie, are you on the phone somewhere?
Like, they're both, they're both texting me that they're here, but I don't think they are, I don't know.
There is a caller who's identified merely as a caller number.
And it says Charles Osberger Webb, so it's, Charlie is logged in.
Okay, so, how, how am I not seeing his picture?
Uh, Charlie, you are both muted and invisible, can you? Al, Al is here. Al is here, and I see Charles Osberger also, Charlie, can you make yourself visible or, and unmuted, so we know you're here? Okay, you're, now, can you say something so we can hear you? I am here. Terrific.
How about Charlie?
And we've got, let me see, there's Charlie, okay.
Where is he? I don't see.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, all right.
I'm here.
When was there marked as present, and now they're part of the meeting, because that's the first time I've seen them or heard them, okay, thank you.
Well, there are more people present than can fit on a single screen, so you may have to scroll down to see everybody.
No, I see Charles now, he just joined, and as far as Al, I know he was on the phone, but I haven't heard him, and I don't know if any.
He's on the very bottom of the screen, and he's here and can hear you. Yeah, I can hear. Did you hear that, David?
I do Mayor, now I know, I see Charles, I know he's here, and I've heard Al, I know he's gone in by phone, so that's, sorry to disturb, all set, thank you.
That's perfectly okay, that's perfectly okay, Mr. Shaken.
Thanks, just a process question for you or Linda, is now the time for council questions, or is now the time for us to get comments and questions from the public?
That was my question to Linda, do you want questions from the council at this point, or is this time for the public?
Um, I, that would be at your discretion, I would say normally with planning and zoning, they start with, uh, questions from the members before moving into questions and comments from the public.
No, we usually do the other way around, unless, uh, per information purposes, the members of the council have questions of Linda for information purposes, Mr. Freudman.
Thank, thank you very much Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity, uh, I understand that there are different ways that these monies can be used, and I know that they've only been used in ways that are perfectly legitimate, and, and allowed by, by statute or the terms of the grant, however, um, as I've indicated in previous. However, as I've indicated in previous meetings, the use I'd like to see the most, or almost exclusively, is for housing rehabilitation. That is the very first application mentioned that grants to assist homeowners in basic rehabilitation activities. And over on the next page, page 12, I see housing rehabilitation activities are at the top of the list. I read the narrative very carefully and reread it, and I understand you have these loans out there, and you don't seem to have any more applications in requesting those loans. But I also have to question you, to what degree has there been outreach? I've never seen any notice of this program, for example, the quarterly publication from the community center. I've never seen it in senior sparks, and I don't believe it's ever included, for example, among other things, in sewer and recycling bills to residents. Just have a.
We have a question, Mr. Freudman. Let's see if we can get an answer. What kind of outreach have you done, Ms. Painter?
I'm also going to ask Jaleen Woodmansey, our planning specialist, to jump in if I miss anything, but I will tell you, I know that when we had the quarterly publication that was being mailed out last year, I think this was in just about every one of those publications, encouraging homeowners to contact us for projects. We also get referrals from the Human Services Department, so when they're working with clientele who are having problems, they do referrals for us. We have done mailings in the past. I do not know when the last one was, but I know we've done townwide mailings on that. So, and again, one of the challenges that we face on this is that when it comes to program income, the state wants all of that program income committed by a certain period of time to show that you don't need additional money. So, given the loan repayments that we received and the balance that we have, even though we're working with property owners, that's a challenge for us. The other thing that has been a challenge, quite frankly, this year has been COVID-19. We are trying to work on policies that will allow us to continue with our housing rehab activities.
Excuse me, Mayor, you interrupted me, and I understand Linda's answer. I hate to interrupt, but everybody's interrupting everybody at this point, especially the mayor. My point is, Linda, you just stated that there was at some point a townwide notice has gone to the residents. I've lived here a very long time, and I've never remember seeing any such notice come into my mailbox, not that I would qualify, but I'm saying I've never seen such notice. So, I do question how much outreach there are. There are a lot of poor people in this town, even if they are invisible to, you know, certain members of staff or of the council, and I'm sure there are many people who are destitute, hanging on by their fingernails, have critical repairs that they have to do in their houses, and maybe not know about this program. And I've never heard, I've never seen a townwide publication, so I question that. If you could tell me, when was the last time there was such a townwide publication, notice sent to the town? Please tell us now, because you did state it.
I did, as I said, I can tell you that this was included in articles that went out in the Mansfield Views publication that was, went out last year. I believe the last one was in the fall. I could be mistaken. John's nodding yes. So, we did, as part of department articles, include information on this program and encourage people to apply for it. As I said, we have done townwide mailers. I'm not sure when the last one was, but I do have them in my office, and if you want, we can produce information on when those were sent out. I don't know that we've done that recently, because we do have about five people that we are currently working with. Jaleen, is there anything that I'm missing in terms of outreach there?
Just because our focus was really on White Oak, we didn't do a tremendous amount of outreach for this grant cycle.
Mr. Shaken.
What are the, for an individual homeowner who might qualify for the program to make repairs to their house, what are the income requirements for that particular individual?
The income requirements depend on the number of people in your family, but we go by an 80% median income.
So, for a, for an individual, that would be an income of somewhere in the $50,000 a year range?
Yeah, I believe, sorry, I don't have the number right in front of me, but I believe for one individual, it's right around $54,000, and then it goes up incrementally from there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Mr. Bruder.
Hi, thank you. Two questions. One being, we originally had $700,000 requested, and you're saying that we can't ask for, we can't change that to be $1 million now?
So, at the time, and I think as Fran described, the original need that he had contemplated for Station 207 was for a pumper truck, which was $650,000. We filed two notices of intent with the state. We're required to let them know about what we think we may be doing. The first one we filed was for housing rehabilitation for White Oak condominiums, and quite frankly, a lot of effort went into trying to make that project work. We just were not able to get the eligibility that we needed. Because we knew that that might be a problem, we filed a second notice of intent to let them know that if that project did not work out, we were intending on applying for $700,000 for public facilities for fire protection equipment. We are also required to notice in the paper and identify in that notice how much we were planning on asking for from staff's perspective. I don't think it's prohibited, but we were concerned that it may not come across very well, that we told the public we were asking for $700,000 and then asked for a million, because that may be, that's $300,000, and that could be a very big difference to members of the public in terms of whether or not they would support something of this nature.
Thank you. And then my second question is for Fire Chief Raiola. Given the, I'm sure that this vehicle is going to be larger, would it fit as the building is right now in 207?
Yes, it would. It would fit in 207 as well as the center station, and as Linda said, initially, this grant is for Station 207. But as many of you know, we have, we are doing a study to think about whether we need three fire stations or we could get to two. That may relocate that truck into the center station at town in a future need, but in any case, it would fit in either one right now.
Mr. Sharon.
This may not be the time to ask this question. If not, I'll ask it later. Basically, should this be approved, what is the financial commitment that the town is making out of its resources for the next fiscal year?
So, this is, and I may have to ask Sheri to weigh in on this. This is a two-year, we have two years to do this in terms of implementation if we're awarded the grant, so it's not something that is automatically, we have to get it done in one year. I do know there is some lead time on ordering a fire truck. I believe it's about a year from what Chief Raiola has said. So, right now, there is $250,000 that was actually budgeted as part of the 2018 capital improvement budget that would go towards this. And then to make up the difference, the town would need to commit to appropriating an additional $200,000 if the grant were awarded.
Over two years, not next year.
Again, that's, and I'm going to ask Sheri or either Mary Brahm, so it's essentially a commitment to the state that you would, if the $700,000 were received, you would essentially come up with that $200,000 to make up the difference.
Ms. Bruder, come on.
Thank you. I think I understand what's happening. I think I understand that we do need a pumper truck in the not-too-distant future, and we, we currently, in a sense, have a need for a ladder truck because of Store Center, but we have a relationship with Yukon where we're covered for that. And what we're thinking now is that in the not-too-distant future, we may have tall buildings in the Four Corners area. Am I right so far? Am I getting everything?
Yep, I think you're on the right track.
Okay. So, my question is, and I don't mean this to sound combative in any way, but is there, would we also need to hire an additional firefighter if we just went with a pumper truck? And could you explain why we need an additional firefighter if we go with a pumper truck slash ladder truck?
Sure. So, they are in essence separate, but they are tied to each other, they being staffing as well as the vehicle. So, let me start with the vehicle, and then I'll approach the staffing if that helps. So, either way, we were on track to replace a pumper for $650,000. Yes, we have Store Center, and we've had agreement with Willimantic and Yukon for ladder trucks. We've seen development in the south end of town, as well as, because ladder trucks are not just about tall buildings. They're about firefighter safety, being able to rescue people with one device and multiple things without carrying people down ladders. There's a lot more information as to what these trucks can do. So, rather than go ahead and purchase this pumper truck right now, and us see a need in a couple of years with the Four Corners development and whatnot, and then come back and say, we need a ladder truck for 1.1 or 1.2, so we could get both in one truck. So, that was the reason for saying, let's get this ladder truck now. We could possibly leverage $700,000 in a grant towards this truck and not have to replace the pumper. So, I don't know, counselor, if that answers the truck part.
Can I just do a quick follow-up on that?
Please. There's a question that didn't get answered.
So, yes, thank you, Tony. So, part of, so my additional question would be, how much life does a pumper truck in itself have? I mean, are there 10 more years left, or, because is it possible now we're going to have two functioning trucks? And, but you had said that this would need to be replaced, so I'm guessing that's not the case. The other question is the issue of staffing. Does, what is it about a ladder truck that requires an additional firefighter?
So, and let me be clear, it wouldn't be one additional firefighter. I would anticipate with a ladder truck or not, I think we're in a need for staffing for this reason, and I'll approach the ladder truck in a minute. Is, you know, fire department staffing is 24 hours a day, unlike, say, Public Works, the schools that have one shift to staff, Monday through Friday. Imagine if you were running your school, three shifts on weekends, 24/7, you'd be three times a staffing. We have four currently, a minimum of four firefighters on duty to cover three stations, which currently we're not covering anybody in Station 207. That's to cover an ambulance, which requires two bodies to go out on every time, almost constantly. That leaves us two bodies for the other fire trucks and anything else we need. A motor vehicle accident alone requires a rescue truck and fire truck. So, we've been short-staffed for quite a while. Part of that reason goes back to the 80s and 70s when we had 40, 50 volunteers, which we no longer have. We've lost that over the last 10, 12 years, like every community. So, we need to separate from this ladder truck, in my opinion, as your fire chief. We need to have a plan to address staffing as we go forward, and that can be a multi-year approach. What I did say is that I'm not willing to accept a ladder truck right now, whether there's a grant or not, without a commitment to having staff to run it. Makes no sense to park a ladder truck in a firehouse where nobody's there and we can't operate it safely. So, I don't know if that answers your question on staff.
Mr. Shaken.
Thanks, Mayor. Before I sort of zero in a little bit here, are we zeroing in right now, or are we asking questions? Like, should we put a pin in the discussion and reaction to Fran's answer, or should we have it now?
This is questions for information, and then we will go to public comment, and then there is an item on the agenda for discussion, and we'll have discussion at that point.
Okay, then I don't have any questions about this in particular. I think I have some concerns for that portion of the agenda.
Mr. Raiola, one of the questions that was brought out asked is, what is the lifetime of the existing pumper truck?
Yeah, so any piece of fire apparatus has about 17 to 20 years life expectancy, and that also depends on what the use is and the mileage, et cetera. A ladder truck would not be any different, whether it's a pump car or a ladder truck. Those large apparatus have a life expectancy and a recommendation for replacement of about 17 years.
Okay, my question really was, the existing pumper truck, what's its life expectancy?
So, it's a 2004 truck, which we would expect, we had on our capital to start replacing that next year to meet that life expectancy. We have seen increased maintenance costs with the truck, and in fact, we moved its replacement ahead of a heavy-duty rescue truck because we were seeing the maintenance costs with that truck.
Okay, are there any more questions on this issue from members of the council? Mr. Kochberger.
Thank you. Thank you, Fran. Do you have any idea, or could we get the number of calls in the last couple of years? I guess it would be the Store Center where a ladder truck was required. It wasn't sent simply because it was the truck most available, but in fact, it was required. I'm just trying to get a sense of how often do we, you know, the only place, I assume we need it now, is the stores downtown, and how many times have we had to rely on Yukon for a ladder truck because that was the specific equipment that was needed? I wouldn't expect you to sort of have that information now, but in fact, something we could get. Thank you.
Yeah, we can certainly work on that, and what I'd say, counselor, is the reason the ladder, we have survived with the mutual aid from the city of Willimantic and Yukon up until Store Center, and this is trying to think in the future. We're looking at some development in the Four Corners that, some preliminary stuff I've seen looks like Store Center, as well as some other areas in town, and it reaches a point when you have enough responsibility that that fire protection is really your own, and I think that's where we're headed with needing our own ladder truck, on top of the availability of Yukon or Willimantic based upon their call volume and whatnot. And I just also add that, I can provide you all the numbers that we have available, but I always tell people I don't have a crystal ball. So, it's not only based upon the number that we have, it could be an incident that happens tomorrow night, and it's one incident where we needed that truck, and we need to be prepared to provide that fire protection. But I can get you some info.
I just wanted to say, before you start the public hearing, I just wanted to recite the phone number information, so it's 1-646-749-3122, and the access code is 570.
Please do the guest floor.
Telephone number, 1-646-749-3122. Access code is 570-480-309, and the password is 561130.
All right. Mr. Osberger, did you have your hand up? Mr. Osberger appears to be frozen. Mr. Osberger, are you there? Did you have your hand up? Okay, would you unmute yourself? There we go. You have a question? No. Okay. All right. Who do we have from the public who wishes to address the council on this issue?
The only public we had connected, Mayor, was Betty Wassman, and she has since disconnected. I don't see any other callers out there.
If there are no requests for commentary, no comments from the public, I will now declare this public hearing to be closed. The next item on our agenda is opportunity for the public to address the council in general, but we don't seem to have anybody from the public wishing to address us. Do we have any email comments, Mr. Carrington? Do we have any email comments, Mr. Carrington?
There was some budget comments, I believe they're in the packet tonight.
As communications?
Yes.
Okay, so members of the public can see any of those public comments by going to the communication section of our agenda for tonight. The next item on the agenda is the report of the town manager, but before we get there, we have some folks from out of town who are, and staff members whose only reason for being here is to have the discussion on the grant opportunities, the Small Cities Program, which is listed as Item B under New Business. It would be helpful to them if we would move Item B under New Business up to, prior to the update on COVID. Would somebody, Mr. Shaken?
Thank you, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, the motion is to move Item B under New Business to, is there a second? Where was the second from?
Second.
Mr. Bruder, the man in the suit and tie.
Suit jacket.
I didn't, we're not asking. So move it up immediately following the report of the town manager. Okay, does anybody object to that motion?
Do we have a, Mayor, for a discussion?
That will be when we have the discussion on the proposal.
No, a discussion on this motion to move the agenda item up.
We've got a motion and a second, moved and seconded, that was kind of your discussion. Do you have a discussion?
I just want to make sure that I understand, we're moving up an item of New Business up ahead of the category for New Old Business, is that my understanding?
Well, my proposal was actually to move it ahead of reports and comments of council members.
Okay, I'm okay with that, I just wanted to make it understood. I've never seen that before, sometimes we move an item up so it becomes the first item under Old Business instead of, you know, later, but you want to move it a couple of categories, I'm okay as long as I understand it, thank you.
Good, okay. All right, and the objection to the change in the agenda? All right, the motion's been adopted unanimously. Okay, so, Mr. Carrington, would you like to make your report?
Madam Mayor, as I've done with all COVID-19, I'm going to combine that with Item 8A, so I'll talk during that time, if that's okay.
Okay, then the next item on our agenda is the Small Cities Program Authorization to Apply for Small Cities Funding and Adoption of Required Plans and Policies. Page 147.
I think the motions are on 149, Madam Mayor.
There they are, okay, so, we heard the presentation on this proposal, and we've had the information, so I think the first thing we should try to do is the First Resolution Authorizing Application, and then we can have discussion on whether or not we want to do that. Would somebody care to make this motion? Mr. Shaken?
Well, I don't want to make the motion because I think I have some concerns about the application, and that may be why others aren't raising their hands right now, too. So would you?
If we get the motion on the floor, we can vote it up or down.
Mayor, may I say something?
Mr. Shaken has the floor at the moment, Mr. Freudman.
Well, I understand that, Tony, but I'm not, I'm not generally in the practice of making a motion that I'm not going to vote for, so I'm not sure that, being a proponent of a motion that I'm not going to support, so maybe we can handle the discussion.
All right, then I think we need to have some discussion before the motion goes on the floor. Mr. Freudman?
No, I just want to say, I agree completely with Mr. Shaken. Generally, I believe our rules of procedure say we encourage some discussion, opportunity to discuss things, maybe even ask staff some more questions before we jump to a motion. I've often had a beef that people jump right into the motion, so in a rare case...
Here's your chance, here's your chance.
Agreement with Mr. Shaken, which I hope will be repeated many times, I believe he's correct. We should have an opportunity to discuss and ask questions and debate things before we put a motion on the table. I just want to support Mr. Shaken.
You have it, you have it, right now, Mr. Freudman, do you wish to speak to this issue? There is no motion on the table, do you wish to speak to this issue?
Oh, certainly, if Mr. Shaken didn't want to, since it was his good suggestion that we first have... So I will do that. I will not, if this motion, as written on the middle of page 149, is put on the table, I will certainly not be supporting it. My reasons were, to some extent, divulged when I, with my questions to Director Linda Painter before, and my comments that were mixed in with my question. My feeling has always been about this program, that I know it can be used for a bunch of things, but the only thing I want to see it used for is to help poor people stay in their homes. I would like to point out to the council, or those who have, can scroll, or anyone that's following, is on page 15 of our packet, council packet for tonight, was an example, were examples of how these grants were used in the past. And the only one I like on that page is where it was done to help residents, it says general store, but really it was residents who live above the store, and they needed to have a, I don't want to mention individuals, okay, I shouldn't, but you know, it did say general store in the packet, so you know what I mean. You know, they needed a septic system, and this is an example, this is the best example of how it should be used. And I know there are more people out there like that, who need that roof, who need that 40-year-old boiler replaced. Some water heater is about to go, and they have no money, and that's how I want to see it used. I know there are people that need that money and don't know about this program. What I don't like to see it used for, even though it's allowed, staff has done, staff is doing nothing wrong, it's as allowed by statute, I want to get that out there. I just don't like to see monies that are precious tax dollars appropriated by the Federal Housing of Urban Development and sent to, you know, the Connecticut Department of Housing, and it's meant that the sentiment behind it is to help homeowners. That's how I want to see it used. I do not feel that a well-to-do town like Mansfield should use it to bind fire equipment, as important a capital improvement plan as it may be. It should not be used to make upgrades or repairs to a community center as valid a repair as that may be. And in my opinion, my humble opinion, it certainly isn't meant to give to a multimillion-dollar corporation known as the New American Corporation, which runs the Juniper Hill units, to give them a million dollars, as has been done over the years, to $500,000 grants. It may all be legal, but it's not for me, as a member of the council, it bothers me. That's not how I want to see precious HUD dollars used, even though these other applications are allowed. So unless it's used to help poor individuals make repairs to their individual owner-occupied homes, repairs that they can't afford, and if those people aren't out there, or they haven't been found, they haven't been contacted in some way, or you really feel they aren't out there, then I don't want the money. I will not support this motion if it's presented unless it was used for the use that I just mentioned. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity, I yield the floor, thank you very much.
Any other council members wish to speak to this issue? Mr. Shaken?
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I think I tend to agree with David on a philosophical level, although I think, you know, we have an obligation on the flip side of that as our local government to do our best job to scare up resources anywhere that can be scared up, and the onus is on the Department of Housing and Urban Development or the State Department of Housing to make the rules for their programs such that they are as narrow as perhaps they should be. However, my concern about this application, as it sits before us, is a little bit different. And I think, I'll try to, I'll try to frame it in a way that makes some sense. I think everything that Fran, Chief Rayola, talked about earlier tonight makes a lot of sense, and I think he's absolutely right that we need a plan around staffing the fire department, a long-term plan, given that we're at a point now where we're not relying on volunteers the way that we were even five or 10 years ago. What I'm concerned about is the commitment that this grant places on us to make those decisions in a way that feels a little bit backwards. So if we are granted these funds, not only are we on the hook for the difference between the balance and the vehicle, but we've also made a commitment, just by making this grant application as a council, to, first of all, increase firefighter staffing by two firefighters at least, and second of all, and perhaps more importantly, because I think, at least for me, I'm of the opinion that we need as many firefighters as we need, and so if our fire department has a need for more staff, then we need to provide for that need. But I think more importantly is the requirement in this program that the vehicle be serving a portion of town that would fit into this program, which means that it needs to be at Station 207, when in fact, we've, my recollection is, had some substantial conversations in the past, maybe not in the last year, but certainly two, three years ago, about that station in particular, which I believe is the station on the northern end of Route 195 across from the old Video Visions Plaza, as it will forever be known to me, and whether that station is, in fact, one that we will keep. I'm not saying we've made a decision that this would reverse. I am, however, saying that we haven't made a decision, and the requirement in this grant to house this truck there seems to make that decision for us. And I'm not comfortable with that. So I'm also sort of fully recognizing that if we don't move ahead with this, we're potentially leaving $700,000 towards the purchase of this vehicle, three, you know, almost three-quarters of its cost on the table, which is not something I take particularly lightly, but I'm not comfortable sort of making decisions about the future, both staffing and physical location of the town's fire stations through the receipt of the award of this grant. So that, those are my thoughts, and I appreciate what other councillors think, or if staff have any reactions to them. But that's kind of what my thoughts are here in the conversation that happened after the presentation earlier.
Any other council members wish to comment? Mr. Bruder?
Because I also, well, I think Ben said a lot of the, I share a lot of the same concerns as Ben, and I think, maybe I shouldn't talk about this right now, but I think we should have an little information about what the current staffing needs are for firefighters in terms of what their schedules are.
Thank you, Mr. Bruder. Anybody else have a comment on this issue? Ms. Berthold?
I guess I'm still a little bit confused on the staffing issue. Does accepting this grant make hiring a necessary? Or is it the truck itself that's making hiring? I'm also hearing Chief Rayola saying that, in fact, we need to hire more firefighters, but absent that, setting that need aside, in terms of, I'm not seeing the tie-in, completely understanding the tie-in with the grant.
Mr. Carrington?
The grant doesn't tie us into staffing, but what Fran, Chief Rayola, is saying is that you will need staff for this truck, and he's going to argue with or without this truck, he needs more staff. And I also want to say, you know, this will help people out, David, that it lowers the tax base by $700,000 that we get from somebody else, and some other town may buy a fire truck with the $700,000, not us, so it's not like the money's going to probably get turned back in, somebody else is going to get awarded it, and it's just, you know, it's an opportunity we didn't want to miss, but I understand everybody's points, but there are some benefits to the whole town.
Ms. Berthold?
And I also want to say entirely in agreement, it's, we should not, we need to take this discussion very seriously because this is a lot of money, and we need to be thoughtful either in applying or not applying. I guess one thing that's not, so one worry I have is, of course, the world is changing every day with the virus, and what the future of Four Corners may be, may be different than what we thought it was going to be. And I have this real concern that we're, we may be purchasing something that we really won't have a need for. So I also heard the chief say that there are other reasons, other than tall buildings, to have this particular vehicle. Chief, would you speak to that?
Sure, I'd be happy to, and let me just say, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I always feel my responsibility is to try to give you all the best information that you have to make a good decision, and that's my goal here. What I meant by the truck is not just for tall buildings, is that modern-day bucket truck, which we would be getting as the ability to allow firefighters to get on a roof of even some of the homes we're building here, these two-and-a-half-story homes, where we used to send firefighters on foot on roofs. There are lightweight construction concerns and collapse. It gives us the ability to go and open a roof for ventilation that provides safe operation there. It allows us in multifamily apartment buildings, not even the four, five-story buildings, to rescue people who are trapped by fire in multiple ways. And what I mean by that is, we could put a bucket and put two or three people in, one into the ground and go from one apartment to the other to the other, whereas without that, you need to put a ladder to this window, and then a ladder to that window, you need to carry people down the ladder, or hope they have the confidence to walk themselves down the ladder in situations. That all enhances our ability to rescue people in maybe a two- or three-story apartment building, which we have all over. It also, you know, allows us to handle fires in places of worship, churches where there's long reach, where it's difficult to go, a mall where you don't want to put firefighters on a flat roof 50 feet into an unknown area for collapse. So it's directly related to firefighter safety, and we already have infrastructure in our town that it could benefit. And if I could just say, you know, I prefer, as all of you, to have a plan and know everything and be able to plan this out over years. This is, as I said in the beginning, was an opportunity. And what I would hate to have happen is for us to be two years down the road saying, we need the ladder truck, and now it's going to cost us $1.2 million of taxpayer money when we might have been able to leverage $700. But I appreciate everybody's input, and I hope I answered your question.
Mr. Shaken?
Can I pose my statement in the form of a question to Fran, or maybe Linda, for some of the technical details of the grant? Am I correct that if we were awarded this grant and we purchased the truck, that we would be required for the life of the truck to house it at Station 207?
My understanding is that would not be the case, and to your point, if we decided that our study came back that we were going to get to two stations, which I think would be beneficial for the town... for the town, it could either go in the center station at 307 or if we decided to build a new one in the future. Um, so I hope that helps your question.
And just physically, are, are our other two existing stations big enough to park the truck?
Uh, Station 307 is right now, Station 107 is not. And if you remember, um, from the town facility study, that station's been identified as not even a good station for what we have there now, for the future.
Ms. Painter, there is a question about the grant requirements.
And I'm actually gonna ask our consultant, uh, Mary Brom to weigh in on that. Uh, she is a community development expert.
I don't know about that, but this is Mary Brom. Um, the, the grant is primarily to benefit low and moderate income people. And so my thought is that it would have to go, that the, the vehicle would, would obviously be able to use, be used townwide. However, it needs to be housed in the low-income area.
So if we house it in the low-income area, but three years later, that firehouse is closed, what, what are the consequences?
I can't imagine that people would know that it was moved.
Would, would we have a liability if it were moved?
I, I don't know if I can answer that.
All right, but they don't know can't hurt them, that's the theory?
I, I would, I would think that you would want to have, um, have the audit first and show the truck in the right spot, but after that, I can't imagine that. They can do anything if you would, if you were gonna close an area.
Okay, the fire truck would still continue to serve low-income people no matter what. Um, Mr. Carrington?
Fran, correct me if I'm wrong, but two of our fire stations are in a low-income area right now, correct? So that if, if the town decides to build a new one, it may be between those two and it still may end up in a low-income area. I know it could be other places, but it, there's potential if we ever did build a new fire station, firehouse, it would be in the low-income area. We don't know till we get there.
Yeah, I, I think that's accurate, John. And I would just say as the fire chief is that, uh, I understand the housing, but, uh, which I have to understand is whether the trucks parked at Station 307 or 107, we're such a small department, we're providing service with that truck to that area. And for me, that's the critical thing. Um, and, uh, let me just, if I could, uh, Mayor, uh, there was a question about staffing. Uh, this grant does not require us to hire staff. What I'm saying is, is right now I struggle to cover an ambulance, one ambulance, which we try to run to, and one fire truck. I would not want to put us in a worse situation safety-wise with the expectation of the public in this grant that we now have a ladder truck to run and we don't have the staff to do that. So that's why I wanted to be transparent with all of you that if we're gonna get this truck, you know, we, we need to, you need to be aware that we need to have a plan to get some staffing over the next few years.
Mr. Shaken?
I, I think I understand that, Chief, and I think that that resolves, to some extent at least, my concern about whether this backs us into staff, that it's not directly tied. I, I do think that if that's your sort of professional opinion as fire chief about the needs of our fire department, then we ought to have those conversations separately from this grant application as a council and make those decisions. Doesn't have to necessarily be directly tied to an appropriation and a budget, but can be a plan that we vote on and debate separately. I am concerned about the sort of technicality part of the grant application and I, we have a timeline, but I'm not comfortable voting to apply for something if we're not sure that regardless of whether they check or not, we would be out of compliance with HUD if the, if we made a decision down the road to close the fire station that's housed in the census tract, even though our entire fire department, regardless of what station they work out of, serves that census tract. So I, I'm not comfortable moving this forward without a more sure answer on that particular aspect.
Any other comment from members of the council? All right, is there, um, I'm, I'm hearing that this resolution probably does not have majority support if you add up all the members of the council who have spoken. Um, did somebody wish to put the resolution to a vote or, or? If there's nobody to make the motion, then the mo, there will not be a motion. Ms. Berthold.
I just have one more question, uh, following up on Counselor, um, uh, Shaken's point. Is it possible to get this clarified, uh, and bring it forward? I know, I know there's a deadline, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but, uh, is there time to, to get this particular point clarified? Um, I can envision, um, um, the, uh, grant, grant for saying, you know, given the landscape of your town, if you're gonna build a new fire department, it's going to be in a low, low-income census area. I mean, the likelihood of that is indeed, as, uh, Mr. Carrington said, pretty likely. Uh, but I, I do think having, I wouldn't be comfortable voting until that was clarified.
Mr. Bruder?
I, I wonder too, it's, if it's too late to still ask for this to be a, a pumper rather than a, I know there's no one who's seen the resolution right now, but I wonder if that's, is that something that we could still do if we wanted to?
Who would be the appropriate person to answer that question? This, start with Ms. Painter, but I think we also need, uh, input from Mr. Raiola.
I think that's why we're here with what we're saying, because the right answer is to get this type of truck. You know, we, we could use the pumper truck, but in, you know, the right answer is to get this combination hybrid pumper truck, bucket truck, platter truck. Am I wrong, Chief?
No, and, and, and the reason we're in the position we're at, and, and you all understand it, I think now, is, uh, you know, I, we're on a path to spend $650,000, $250,000 that we've already allocated in capital to replace a pumper, which we could apply the grant for this. I just would hate to, and, and I want you to have the information, I would hate to spend that money on a pumper today and then two years, three years down the road be saying we need a ladder truck too. Um, and there's no funding for that. And now that's an extra $1.2 million. I'm just trying to say, we could, we could place both at once here, leverage $700,000 and, um, you know, maybe be prepared for the future. Um, that, that's why we're bringing this to you, to you guys.
Mr. Sharon?
No guarantee we're gonna get this money either, this is just applying for the grant.
So, let me just understand, that the deadline being May 22nd, if we do not approve this tonight, we do not apply for this grant at all this year?
Unless you were to schedule a special meeting, because a council, council resolution and, and adoption of various policies is required. Um, so, you know, I understand from Ms. Berthold that she would like some clarification if we could get it from the Department of Housing, that if, you know, a fire station location were to change in the future, um, would that, you know, have any financial liability for the town, given that this truck would be serving, um, low-income census tracts regardless of where it was parked? Um, but if, that's something we can definitely seek guidance on, uh, to get you an answer. Uh, but it may require a special meeting before May 22nd, uh, in order to get, uh, this submitted.
Well, you know, oddly enough, it's easier to have a, a virtual special meeting than to actually have to everybody get into town, be in town hall. Um, is there any support for delaying this decision until we get further, uh, information? I think there, there might be a motion to do that, to delay a vote on this until we get further information. Mr. Shaken?
I can certainly make that in a motion. I don't know exactly how to table something to a yet-to-be-scheduled, um, special meeting, but I can try. Um, uh, before I do, just a HUD question for Linda, do we need to also move to continue the public hearing?
Uh, you actually closed the public hearing. So at this point, you, you, you closed the public hearing this evening. So at this point, you are just, um, in the discussion stage of deciding whether or not you want to apply, uh, for the, uh, grant itself.
All right, let me pose a hypothetical question. Suppose we hear from HUD that as long as the, the truck is serving low-income families and neighborhoods, that, uh, that it doesn't matter where it's parked. We, we get that piece of it out of the way. And we understand, um, from Chief Raiola, that this is a, an add-on to an already needed pumper truck rather than a totally out-of-the-blue desire for a totally new truck. And we understand that there will be discussions about staffing, uh, at a later date that we can deal with separately. If all of those things happen, will members of the council still support the application? Mr. Freudman?
Well, I, I'm, I see there are doubts about this. That's encouraging from my point of view. I, I won't support, um, using, you know, applying for this grant unless it's you to help poor people stay in their, in their primary residence. So, I mean, do what you want. Uh, I'm, obviously I'd prefer this thing to be put to bed, but, um, you know, you wanna call a special meeting for this? Whatever, I can't stop that. That's all my, all I have to say on it.
I just want to point out that poor people have fires in their houses and, uh, need to be rescued from them too. And it would be awful if somebody lost their house because we didn't have the right equipment, but.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor, and I understand that you can justify community uses for everything. You could say they also need roads to, to drive on or have people drop them to wherever they need to go and you can use it for that. In my opinion, which I said was my humble opinion, when I get precious grants from the Housing and Urban Development, that's, the way I want to see it used is to help people with limited financial means remain in their homes and be able to make critical repairs. That's just my feeling and that's not going.
I agree with.
I understand that, I understand that police cars and fire trucks and, and road paving gets done and helps poor people. I, I understand that. Thank you.
I, I agree with you entirely. Uh, uh, my only concern, and Ms. Painter, perhaps you can answer this question, is it likely that we could put together an application that would provide for housing rehabilitation for low-income people? Would we, is there any like, do we have, do we need the requirements for such a thing?
I'll ask Jaleen and Mary to weigh in on that. I think the challenge with, again, with housing rehab that we brought up in the agenda item summary is that we have significant amount of program income from repayments, uh, from last year, uh, that, that the Department of Housing is going to look at and say, you have money, why are you asking for more at this point? Uh, we also need to show that there is a demand. And again, uh, as Jaleen mentioned, our initial focus for this round was on assisting the homeowners at, uh, White Oak condominiums and the tenants there, because that is one of the, um, lower-cost communities in Mansfield. And unfortunately, that project didn't work out. And when that didn't work out, we had to pivot. Um, and this, this application was a little bit easier, quite frankly, to pull together than a full-blown housing application. Uh, but again, we have Mary here and I'll let her, you know, as the consultant, respond as to whether or not that's something that we could, uh, do at this point. I will note that that was not, uh, something that was part of the public hearing, so I don't know that we have the time at this point, given that we didn't discuss, um, housing rehab as part of the public hearing as a, as a potential application.
All right, so what I'm, what I'm hearing from you, unless, uh, Ms. Brom has a, a different opinion, is that there isn't any point in writing an application for housing rehab this year. There might be a point next year or there might be a point the year after. Uh, if we could get, we could get the, the cert, the certification for White Oak, we would certainly have applied for that. If we could, uh, maybe next year we can find, uh, complete the survey of, of owners in that, in that development so that we could make that application. That would make a lot more sense to most of us. But in the meantime, the question is, do we, excuse me, rep, do we, um, put in a grant application to expand our fire capacity by replacing the pumper truck with a pumper ladder combo? Okay, so my question stands. If we got all our wishes granted on this, does the council support the, the, uh, proposal or are we going to be in a situation that nobody's gonna want to make the motion? Mr. Shaken?
I, I, I think so. Yes, I would at least, um, be supportive if the answer that we got was that an award in this application did not lock us in to a commitment to keep Station 207 open or to make frankly, any other decision about the fire department's equipment, personnel, or infrastructure, building infrastructure based on anything other than the need for public safety. That we should, if we need to build a new fire building somewhere in the future, it should be built in the location that makes it best for the town to fight fires and serve the public, not because we need to build it in a certain census tract. Um, and, and my rec, my recollection of the initial facility study and the conversation we had then was part of the Challenger Station 207 is that it's geographically fairly removed from most of the town. Um, and so if we're consolidating buildings, keeping the one on the northernmost end of town is a very difficult issue when we're talking about response times to emergencies in the middle of town or in the southern part of town. So yes, is the short answer to your question for me.
Yes, you, you would, if all our questions were answered in ways that were, that we wanted them answered, that you would support the application?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to get the positives and negatives correct. How about other members of the council? Mr. Bruder?
Uh, I would agree with everything Ben said. I know I said that before, but, uh, he said it very quickly.
How about Mr. Sharon? You haven't spoken to this issue yet.
My concern is that as we foresee enormous budgetary difficulties over the next two years, I want to make sure that we're not locking ourselves into an expenditure greater than we would have otherwise made. If I'm convinced that that is the case, I would support this.
Well, there's a question for you, Mr. Raiola. Would we have made, would this, would this grant commit us to an expenditure greater than we would have normally made over the next two years?
On the capital dollars, I think our expenditures to the 1.1 million would be about $400,000 where if we didn't, we were replacing a pumper for $650. Um, so there's that difference. I do want to be I do want to be clear that, in my opinion, you know, the staffing has to be a piece of this, maybe not right this year, but it does have to be a piece of this. And I want to be transparent with you all, is that is probably the greater cost over time.
Okay. Mr. Kottchenberger, we haven't heard from you. Where do you think you would stand on this?
Somewhat reluctantly. I mean, I would want, I also would like additional information we discussed. I, given, as Ron said, given the budget concerns and potential concerns, budget issues that none of us really know what's going to happen next year, I'm not in favor of this at this point.
Mr. Bruder?
I'm torn. I certainly see both sides of the argument. I sort of wonder if this, if, as a good idea this year, there'll be HUD money next year. We could apply next year when we have more sense of where things are. But I'm completely on the fence. I really, I have not been tipped one which way.
Mr. Ossberger, you have an opinion? Go ahead. Oh, you're still muted for some reason. Hold on a minute.
He's not muted, it's just slow or not coming through.
Yeah, you're on. We're not hearing you.
I wonder if you could type a response in the chat?
Charlie, do you know how to use the chat function on this? Somewhere near the top of your screen, or maybe at the bottom, there's a little bubble, and you can type into that? While you're trying to figure that out, Mr. Frattoni, do you have an opinion on this?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, okay, I just want to say that with the budgetary concerns that I've been hearing, as well as frankly, the points that Mr. Freudman has brought up, I would not be inclined to support this, moving on this at this present time. I just feel that there are too many questions that really, I mean, today's, what, the 11th, the 22nd? I don't think we could turn it around that fast, and I think it's a big decision, and I would just be inclined to say no at this point.
Mr. Kottchenberger?
I guess, I mean, the one thing that I hadn't thought of before until tonight was, as Chief said, is the value of this truck, independent of the ability to reach particularly tall buildings. If that was the major purpose, and it may well be, then I'm not in favor of it, because I think there's simply other needs that we have to address, or future needs, at least immediately. I would like to learn more about that, that issue. I don't know if we have time, but that's the one that I wanted to add.
All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to make a comment? Mr. Ossberger, are you able, can you make something? Go ahead and try. We're not hearing you at all. Oh, wait a minute.
Is my audio available?
No, because we can hear you slightly.
I think I turned my audio down on something else, my output, because I was on another situation.
Now we're hearing you. Go ahead.
You can hear me fine?
Yeah.
Now you can.
I would have to mirror both Ms. Bertolot's and Mr. Scherin's responses, and as well as Mr. Frattoni's with this. We are in a situation right now where the future isn't necessarily laid out for us, and we really need to consider where the dollars are going to be spent and how we come out of this going forward. And I think that the calendar for this is a little tight for us to be able to make any kind of a coaching decision. That's where I leave my stance.
Okay, thank you. I don't see a majority in favor of this proposal, and so... This, the only thing I can think of doing right now is to ask if somebody would like to make the resolution authorizing the application, and if nobody does, or if it fails for lack of a second, then it fails. Or, we could make the authorization and vote it down, but does somebody wish to make the resolution, to propose the resolution? Mr. Shaken?
Mayor, I'm not... I'm not sure why we would make affirmative vote, yes or no, if there's still potentially open questions that could be answered. The only thing that that does is create significant procedural hurdles for us to reconsider something if new facts come to light between now and the 22nd. I mean, if you just want people on the record, we've all gone on the record pretty-
It's nice, but even if we got the answers about placement and staffing, that there's still not enough support. Unless somebody would like to move that we table this resolution to a special meeting to be called sometime before the deadline of May 22nd to hear additional information, that is another possibility.
That's what I would prefer, because that's the thing I would vote for.
Well, would you like to make that motion?
Sure, I move, fine, I will. I move to table this item until a special meeting to be called before May 22nd, should new information about placement of the vehicle, should we receive the grant, come to light.
I'll second.
Second is by Miss Bertolot.
Did you get that, Serian?
Um, mostly, here's what I got. Move to table the item until a special meeting to be called before May 22nd, should new information about the placement of the vehicle come to light. Does that sound accurate to you, Ben? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's understood that if it turns out that just asking the question, we get a no answer, there's no point in calling this special meeting. So the only reason we would get it is that the information that was provided to us would be helpful. All right, all those in favor of Mr. Shaken's, is there anybody who opposes Mr. Shaken's motion?
Mayor, can we have a discussion after a motion is put on the table?
I was waiting for somebody to put up their hands, and I saw no signs. Do you have something to say?
Yes, thank you. Usually, you know, after motions are put up-
Yeah, I was waiting, I didn't see any hands.
Well, okay. Sometimes you can ask for them as the moderator. Anyway, no big deal. I'm going to vote no on this, only because you've heard my reasons. I don't want to see this movement used except for one purpose only. So I appreciate that we're not voting to, at this point, to use it for these other purposes, or this other purpose, but I'm still not in favor of reconsidering it later. So for that reason, I'll have to oppose the motion to consider a special meeting under those, the conditions stated in the motion. So I'll be voting no, because I want to see this thing put to bed. Thank you.
Mr. Shaken?
I would speak in support, but I believe a motion to table is not debatable.
All right, you're right. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to table, please raise your hands. We have Mr. Bruder, Mr. Scherin, Mr. Kottchenberger, Mr. Shaken, Ms. Bertolot. I can't see Mr. Frattoni or...
Mayor, why don't you just ask for the nay votes, after you ask for the yay votes? I'm sorry.
Well, I couldn't see Mr. Frattoni's. I didn't know whether he had voted yes. All right, now for the nay votes. Please raise your hand. Mr. Freudman? Mr. Ossberger? Mr. Frattoni, how do you vote on this motion?
No.
No, okay. So it is six to three, the motion is tabled. This will be a special meeting, limited to this particular item. Okay, we are ready to move. Oh, if we have the special meeting, it can't be limited to just the single resolution. It will also have to include the adoption of the required policies which are attached. And these are sort of pro forma. We have adopted them every time we've applied for these grants in the past. So be prepared to discuss them if you have some concerns. But that will be the only item on the agenda, is that item of new business. All right, next item on our agenda, and thank you, Miss Painter, Miss Brom, for being with us on this, and unfortunately, we'll have to call you back. And Miss Widdmancy as well, and Mr. Raola, we'll have to, Chief Raola, we'll have to call you all back, but that should be brief, relatively. All right, next item on my agenda is reports and comments of council members. Does anybody have any reports and comments? I'll start. I attended a discussion this afternoon, or this morning, on what it's going to take to reopen education facilities in the state, both upper and lower, higher and lower, and the difficulties of getting people into same rooms. If the infection is still around, and people are still concerned about catching it, it seems to me to be nearly insurmountable. Anyway, it was really depressing to listen to it, so, but clearly, everybody needs to get back to work, everybody, all the kids need to get back to school. President Cuswell has said in his conversations with students, he's asked them whether they found the academic or the social disruption to be worse, and no one has said the academic disruption. The, one thing I've said for many years is that, what we tend to forget about the college experience is that it's mostly about your social life, and who you're going to find as partners in the world, and how you're going to shape your futures. So the academics is only one part of it, and that's the part that's suffering most at this point. The other thing that I've been hearing is that there really is concern about the effectiveness of this online teaching, mostly, more concern at the elementary level, I think, and also with the families where there is less computer access and less, less ability in the families to support computer distance learning for children and older adults, and college-age kids. So that's, that's all I have to report. Any other reports or comments? Hearing none, we will proceed to the COVID-19 update. Mr. Carrington, would you begin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I emailed the council the town manager's report, which most of it is COVID-19. I'll be brief, because a lot of it is no change from last briefing. For council business, proposed budget information is online for residents on our website. Animal control is still operating close to the public. They're taking pets in protective custody when the owner's hospitalized, if they need to, and there's a pet food pantry, and they're following the protocol that's established. Board of Education, with schools closed, they're focused on continuing learning at home and closing out the year. They're using school buses for meal distribution, which allows for an increase in number of meals served and better controlled food temperatures. They're preparing for end-of-year events, which will need to be held virtually, and transitions to the new grade or school. And they're establishing a process for providing feedback to families on student learning. In addition, they're starting to plan for the beginning of the next school year, which the mayor just addressed some of those issues. Billion Housing is no change since the last report. Downtown Partnership is working with businesses to help them meet the state guidelines, are possibly reopening on or after May 20th. They continue administrative spending win contests, support the Mansfield restaurants, and they're sharing their information. The Health District continues to conduct case contact tracing. As of today, they have completed 111 cases, and 31 are still active. The weekly distribution of PPE to area health care providers continues. To date, they've issued 2,870 masks, 400 gowns, 738 face shields, and 90 boxes of gloves to 19 health care providers in the Health District. And the Medical Reserve Corps continues to grow with 57 new volunteers vetted and sworn in the past month, a total of 87 in the unit, and there's 45 in various stages of the bedding process. Facilities, basically no change from previous month, a previous report. Finance, we did receive the Town Aid Road Grant in the amount of $414,125. They're continuing to monitor all revenues and expenditures through June 30th, and operations continue as normal. Fire, responding to 911 calls, trying to keep their personnel safe and maintain PPE supplies. Emergency services, no change from the previous week. Human resources, they received 24 inquiries for the week of May 4th through the 8th for unemployment compensation. They're reviewing information for various source employees for returning to work and the impact that will have on staff. And still recruiting for the finance department head. They had some interviews last week, and we're down to three final candidates that were scheduled to interview tomorrow. Human services, nutrition support for food insecure and homebound senior households through food pantry, Meals on Wheels delivery, and mobile food share, in coordination with other food pantries and faith-based organizations. The rest of it, they're continuing as normal. Information technology, during the month of April and early May, they've had over 30 public meetings, were livestreamed, they're recorded, and recorded for public access. They're using social distancing and masks and hand washing to operate everything, and they're continuing to help everybody with remote access, go-to meetings, Zoom meetings, Google Classroom, and P-Learning. Libraries, mailing seeds to people requesting for the seed library, working on a phased opening plan with no set dates. Parks and Rec, they offer a variety of online exercises and activities. Staff is continuing to contact all community center members to see how they are doing and provide information. Recent survey to Silver Sneakers members was completed, and a survey of the, summary of the survey results will be shared with council members soon. And the summer program brochure has been distributed, and staff are preparing modified- And the summer program brochure has been distributed, and staff are preparing modified operational plans for summer programs and camps, following the guidelines given. Uh, planning and development is developing permit procedures with others for outdoor activities pursuant to the reopening guidelines for business sectors that have been authorized to reopen on May 20th. That'll be finalized as soon as possible once the governor issues anticipated executive order related to permit and fee waivers. And if needed, we'll have special meetings to, uh, address any of those issues. Uh, public works is continuing as normal. Uh, state troopers continuing as normal. And town clerk is continuing as normal. I did get a email from, uh, somebody about a marriage licensing, how Sarah Ann is doing a great job compared to other town halls as far as dealing with the public. So kudos to our town clerk. And upcoming events, uh, stores, farmer's market, uh, is open every Saturday from 3 to 6:00 PM on the front lawn. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Any, any questions for the town manager? Mr. Bruder?
Sorry about that. Did I hear you correctly that, uh, finalists for the director of finance are being interviewed, uh, this week?
Yes, we have three being interviewed tomorrow.
And what is the expected time that they'll, uh, start?
If we select somebody of those three, which is not a guarantee, uh, they were told that it'd be July with an overlap with, uh, the current finance director.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Osberger?
Uh, Mr. Carrington, um, did you have any, any, um, uh, figures on the COVID numbers? I know, I recall we said something about the last time we were up to 14, and has that dropped?
No.
Well, we've got 24 cases confirmed. I'm sure some of those have recovered, and we've had two, uh, COVID-related deaths in Mansfield. And I send that information out every day to the town email. I can send it to your personal email, Charlie, if I remember.
Yes, please, I appreciate that.
Yeah, they, if you look at the maps, uh, we are, this Tolland is, um, is much, has a much worse infection rate than does Wyndham County, um, with more deaths, but I think those are in the, the urban areas like Vernon, uh, although there's some in the town of Tolland. But Mansfield and Wyndham are still among the towns that are, um, relatively safe. You know, Eastern Connecticut is, if you're looking at the colored maps, Eastern Connecticut is still a better place to be than most of the rest of the state. Um, Wyndham Hospital has just had something like two or three cases, uh, and the nursing homes are still pretty much clear. So we're in, we're in much better shape than a lot of other places. Any other questions? Mr. Freudman?
Yes, Mr. Carrington, I saw where, you know, it's down to three possible strong applicants for finance. I mean, that is such a critical hire. Is there anything you would be, feel of liberty or would care to share with us about what attributes you're looking for and, uh, maybe, maybe finding in these finalists?
Trying to find a finance director that has experience and, you know, can operate more than just the town budget, but also the, the board of education and Region 19, and somebody, you know, experienced with shared services, experienced with being a finance director. You know, I haven't interviewed any of them yet, so I can tell you more tomorrow, but...
Oh, I thought you interviewed, I thought you had interviewed the final four recently, and now...
I haven't interviewed anybody. They, other people interview, and then it comes to the finalists, and then I interview them along with the two superintendents.
Is Cherry, uh, is Director Treyhan involved in the interviewing and selection process?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I would assume that one of the, one of the things that the department heads who are involved are very concerned with is making sure they do background checks and, uh, reference checks of the candidates because they've all lived through the problems that we have on a much more intimate level. Any other questions of the town manager? All right, then we can proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is the budget calendar and the budget discussion. I, I have made a request of the town manager. Uh, traditionally, there has been a, um, townwide mailing that includes a summary of the budget as being proposed at the town meeting. Um, and, um, we, we are not going to have a town meeting, and the process is very changed, but there is going to be a public hearing. We've, we've asked for a public hearing, and, um, and in the revised schedule, you'll see that that's been worked in. Um, and then, and to prepare the public for an opportunity to respond to the public hearing, um, we, we've also asked, or I've also asked that we have this mailing that gives people the basic information that they will be discussing at the public here. Now, there's a problem of timing, uh, but I think it's, it's also really important that we explain in this mailing what the process is and why it has changed, um, and also that we, uh, put in front of people to the extent possible, uh, the council's budget, so that when the public hearing arises, people will know what, what we're talking about, and they can have an opportunity to have input. So let's take a look at the revised budget review calendar. Um, if you look, you will see on, um, May 11th, there's a budget review discussion. On May 26th, um, uh, yeah, uh, a budget review, general funded capital on April 26th. On May 11th, which is tonight, it's, we're doing the, we have some time to discuss where we want to go with the budget. On May 26th, there will be further, uh, discussion. Then on June 2nd is the public hearing, starting at 7:00. And then on June 4th, the Thursday, is a three-hour time slot for adoption. And if we haven't reached the adoption, then we have another hour on June 8th. Mr. Shaken?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to move to adopt the revised budget calendar for fiscal year 2021 as presented in the packet.
Could, could we still have a little discussion as we were having a moment ago before putting the motion on the table? I know any, any council member can put a motion on at any time, just asking.
Well, we, we'll have time for discussion. The motion is on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Berthelot. Okay, now discussion. Mr. Freudman, you have...
Do I have the floor, Mayor? Just in support of my motion, we already had a conversation about the calendar at our last meeting. My recollection is somewhat spotty. I thought we had made a motion, but perhaps we did and just forgot to vote on it. Um, if we didn't, I, I'm pretty confident I had made a motion to adopt the calendar last meeting, but either way, um, after this motion passes, hopefully, we are going to have however extensive a discussion about the budget as we'd like without, without motions. But this is just to revise our calendar as we talked about last meeting. So I hope you will all support it.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Freudman?
Thank, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. You know, I will support this motion. I just want to say, as a preface to my remarks, you know, I always welcome when there's an opportunity to have discussion. I had commended, uh, quite, um, vigorously, Mr. Shaken, uh, previously when we were discussing the small cities grants, that he wanted to have a discussion before a motion was slapped on the table, and I'm glad we did that, and I commended him for it. And, and I'm always dismayed when people quickly put a motion on the table. I always feel that somehow that limits debate because then you have always followed this rule that was by the previous mayor's edict of March 2018 that limits discussion only to two opportunities that were just imposed, basically, and just adopted, never been done before. I just think, we, we, as members of a minority party, it doesn't limit you, you have unlimited numbers of opportunities to speak because you're numerous. So I feel when a motion is put on the table right away, cynical as I am, I feel it's done to limit debate, but I, I, I shouldn't dwell on that too much. I just want to say, I, I will, as I said, I will support this motion. Um, I just might make an observation. I see on May 26th, we're having a budget review, kind of like we're having tonight, uh, following this particular motion. The next thing as part of this agenda item is a budget, uh, discussion, budget review. But it also, it doesn't just say discussion, it says discussion and proposed adjustments. I think that's a good thing. You know, in previous budget meetings, I have made, uh, expressed my opinion about how I would want to see adjustments made, and they were, you know, it never kind of was discussed, and all I see done is staff will flag it, and I've said, I don't need to flag it, we just need to discuss it and possibly have it in the final budget when, when it's presented to us on June 4th. So I'm glad we're having at least one meeting before adoption of the budget where proposed adjustments are, are, would be, um, accepted by, uh, Your Honor, the mayor, for discussion. I'm just sorry that it hasn't been done at all the meetings, budget meetings here before, including the one we're going to have in a, in a few moments. But, uh, we want to stay on point since the motion was put on the table right away, unfortunately. Um, I will support this motion. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this motion? Mr. Shaken?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the second time, I, and I guess I will quickly rehash what we talked about last meeting. What we've done so far is received the manager's budget over the course of a number of budget work sessions. Um, we have received through, from him and his department heads, the proposal that the management has put forward. And when we have those discussions, the tradition has always been that counselors are able to ask questions and flag issues, um, that they'd like to discuss later when the council, it's time for us to make a decision. So that's what we've done so far. What that means is tonight's discussion that will follow this vote is that opportunity for the council to raise the issues that we'd like raised, and if there are things that we would like to change about the budget, to ask John and Cherry to run the numbers on them so that when we get to June 2nd, I'm sorry, to May 26th, we can make motions to the budget, to change the budget that are educated, that have numbers behind them. At that meeting, we can have another discussion, we will have another discussion, and then I expect that the council will put forward a budget. And here's when things get different from what we've done in the past, since there's no more town meeting. That used to be the time when we would adopt our budget. We would make a motion, adopt the budget, go to town meeting. And what instead I think this schedule proposes is that because we can't have a town meeting this year, we will make a motion to, to adjust the budget and make probably several motions and have a vigorous debate, and then the, that meeting will end with the council-proposed budget that we have voted on as a council. We will then give the townspeople notice, which is what Tony was just talking about, sending something in the mail, the budget in brief, same as a town meeting, invite people to submit their public comments and to attend virtually a public hearing on June 2nd. We will take any information and input we get at that hearing, and then on June 4th, two days later, make any changes to what we have proposed based on that feedback that we see necessary, and if there's a lot of changes and we need it, we can come back on June 8th and adopt a final budget. So this is a way for us to get as much public input as we can, understanding that there will be, by order of the governor, no town meeting and no referendum on this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment on the motion to adopt the revised calendar? Is there anybody opposed to adopting the revised calendar? Hearing no objection to the motion, I declare that it is adopted unanimously. All right, the next item on our agenda is...
Tony?
Yes?
Aren't we having a discussion about the budget now?
Yes, we are. The next item is the flagged items. So, um, is there any, any question? These are the attachments, there are flagged items, there are requested items which have been distributed, there are, um, future suggestions and discussions, uh, there is a revised tax Ms. Treyhan, are you there? Uh, would you care to discuss, to comment on the materials which we have been presented?
I am here, um, certainly. So, um, I'll skip past the flagged items, um, and I'll start to review the individual pages. So the first one is the revised proposed levy. Um, this was simply updated with, um, the change in the contribution to Region 19. Um, there will be a follow-up adjustment to this as we now have final grand list numbers. Um, it won't make, um, a significant difference. Um, the only change would be, um, the grand list goes down about $387,000, um, which would mean we'd need to reduce the proposed budget by $98,000 to get to zero. So that would be the only change there. But putting in the new Region 19 contribution brings the proposed, uh, uh, levy to a point 08 increase or point 24%. We will have an adjusted page, um, with the revised levy, um, for the next packet. Okay?
Question, you would continue?
Mayor, can I ask a question before we go to the flagged items, unless Cherry had something else on this page?
Go right ahead.
Thank, thank you very much, Mayor. Cherry, I, I assume we're on page 39 of the packet where you're explaining the, you know, grand list and Region 19 contribution, et cetera. I noticed that, um, little below, a little past halfway down the page, you have the amount of the abatement, um, which is $291,000. Gee, as I recall, the fixing agreement for Store Center was seven years. Well, there were two fixing agreements that gave the 4.6 millions in tax abatement to the developers of Store Center, but they were, there was a one-year stagger, so I guess, you know, one of them, overall, it went on eight years. So, so where are we? Are we in the eighth, the seventh year of the second fixing agreement, and this is the last year? Or are we in the seventh year of one and the sixth year of the other, and we're still going to have one more year of abatements? When does it end? It's been, it's been seven, eight, nine years since that project got started and, you know, got built, right?
So we have completed the phase one abatement, and this is the final year of the abatement for phase two.
So this is, so phase one is done, and this is just what's left, the last year of phase two?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, I'll be glad to see that gone. All right, any further questions on the documents that we've been discussing so far? All right, Ms. Treyhan, you wish to continue?
So the next page in the packet is the revaluation analysis on the commercial properties. I used the same format that we used for the residential properties and did, um, broke the, um, the values down by grouping, so value of, um, the, the assessed property for the businesses, so all the commercial properties. So you can see I broke it down into five categories, under $250,000, and this is looking at the old assessed value, um, 250 to 500, 500 to a million, um, 1 to 2 million, 2 million, and up to 12, the, the highest property value that we have of 12,192. 12,192. And again, did, listed the number of properties, the range of change in each of those groupings, as well as the average change. So the average change for our higher value properties was $133,000 or 6.3%. I noted that the median change in that group was 115,000. And I did that same process all the way down. You'll see the smaller businesses, the ones that have the lower property values are actually showing, the median properties are actually showing a slight decrease. I then carried that over into, see what that would look like in terms of the annual tax change. And you can see that in the table below. I think the important thing to note is that there were 11 properties that reflected an increase in value of 14% or more. So what I wanted to do was look at those 14 properties because they would have the most significant change, regardless of what category they fell in, they would have the most significant change. The total of those properties accounted for over $3 million or 93% of the overall commercial increase. And I think the important thing to note is every one of these properties showed an increase in their income value, or they had additions or renovations done to the properties. So it wasn't just the fact that it was a, a business running along and we suddenly had a change, there were significant changes within their income, within the income approach. Okay, any questions on that?
Okay, go ahead. No questions.
Okay, prioritization of the capital improvements, so...
Excuse me, sorry. Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Sorry to interrupt Director Tran. I, I thought you said, Mayor, that we'd also be going over the flagged items. Cherry, Cherry chose to start with something a little bit after the flagged items or are we just not going to discuss the, the flagged items that start on page 35?
We do not normally review those flagged items. Those get discussed when you discuss the budget. That list is provided for you just so that we can keep track of what your flagged items are. Those would get discussed during your budget discussion.
So let's finish with, with the new documents and then we can go back to open the, open the discussion of the budget as a whole.
So we're, it's, it's shown here and this agenda item is for budget discussion, but we're going to discuss anything but these flagged items would be fair game?
No, no, that's not true. You have absolute right to discuss the flagged items, but we are going through the new items that Ms. Tran has given us first before we go back to the flagged items, before we go back to the general discussion of the budget.
So, to understand, we discuss the flagged items tonight or not?
Yes, yes, we can discuss them tonight, but first we want to get here. Now, one of the things we asked is the prioritization of the capital projects. And so that we have on page 45. Ms. Tran, you want...
If you're ready.
Yep.
So we had a number of conversations, John and I, on how to present this. And one of the concerns that we had was that, recall, I mentioned when, when you asked for this, that our original request came in from department heads over $3 million more than what the, actually almost $5 million more than what this list contained. So we felt very strongly that all of these items are high priority items. So how do we classify them for you? It's very hard to rate one a one and another one a two when they're, they're all equally important. And we've been working to, to build this cash to capital program for so long. So with that said, we, we took a look at it this way and you'll see the priority that we assigned in the upper left-hand corner. We put one as an immediate need, two as a high priority, and three as ongoing funding, things that we need to be funding on an ongoing basis to keep things, for example, communications equipment, to keep our, our equipment and things up, up to par. So that's basically how we broke this schedule down. I'm not going to, right now at this point, start going through line items. We can talk about that later. I just want to show you what's in the packet, give you an overview, and then we can answer any questions you have. I know we have a number of department heads who were, are on the line who can answer questions about the capital improvement program. So the next document is the CIP narrative. And you'll see that we had been asked to add some additional information. So we have a number of them, some, I just felt there was really nothing more to add. But you'll see on some of them where there's additional information provided underneath the description. There's a few other things where we put a chart, things like that. So there's additional information listed for a number of the projects. If you have additional questions on what's here, we'd be happy to answer that as well. What we also provided was, we had a question regarding pictures, things that show what the needs are. So you'll see there's, through the next pages, there's a current list, a justification for the Public Works projects. There's another document that is a justification, including pictures for all the facility improvements needed and repairs, as well as a memo from the EDC on the marketing update. I'm going to skip down. Again, we can go back to that and answer any questions you have. I just want to let you know what's here for additional information. Staffing prioritization. This is the prioritization that we feel the items that are most important, most critical to us, all of them are important, and I think John will speak to that later. We wouldn't include something and haven't include anything that we thought was not necessary, but we did prioritize this, understanding the current situation. The next document is a justification on the HR position. And then finally...
What page is that on, if you have that, Cherry?
John, I don't have the page number, do you? I'm looking at the online version.
You talking about the staffing changes or...
Yeah.
Page 103.
And lastly, we included some information, thought you might like to see it in case you hadn't, information from the Council of Small Towns, they provided unemployment compensation data by town. And just thought you might like to see where this was. Now, there may be some additional updates for this, I'll try to keep an eye out for that, but this kind of gives an idea how many people filed for unemployment in Mansfield during the month of April and the first week of May. And that's all the additional information we have and we'll be happy to answer questions for you.
Okay.
Mr. Freud then?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Ms. Tran, for this very informative report and I appreciate what you've done and staff. I have a few questions and maybe some comments. I understand that this, what I call the summary of the CIP is on pages 43 and 44, and then there's the narrative details that go on from 45 to 50, and I've been going through those a lot and cross-referencing. On page 45 is the narrative for the software upgrade of $255,000. Correct me if I'm wrong, I assume that, you know, I know that's a big ticket item, but I think I heard that has to do with a, a major change in our software package as we move from admins to munis, munis, M-U-N-I-S, software. Is that, is that what the bulk of that is for?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then my, my question again gets down to funding, something I've, you know, been after for quite some time. I just, just if you are prepared to answer, I'd just like to know, since that's, that very much is for financial services, are we billing 25% of that amount? That $63.75,000, are we billing that to the school department? And are we billing 20% of that amount, which would be $51,000, to E.O. Smith?
This is the towns portion only. Each of the, the board and Region 19 have their 25 and 30, I forget what the percentage is, their shares in their own budget. This reflects the town share only.
You need to tell me this is like a half a million, a half a million dollar software package and the other 25 and 20% are already separately billed to them?
That's correct.
Wow, okay. I, I know, I knew it was expensive, I didn't realize that it was a half a million dollars worth of software.
For the first year, for the first year because of the conversion of all the data and setting up the software. It's, it's an incredibly complex program for all the applications, payroll, personnel, finance, budget, general ledger, it's all of the modules, accounts payable, payroll, personnel, all of them. So, and that's just, that's the first year cost. There will be annual maintenance costs, but it will be nothing near that sort of money.
Okay, I understand. I didn't realize that, you know, as part of a bigger amount and that's our, basically our 55% was a 25% and 20% of the total package already billed and not included in the 255. The next question I had, had perhaps Mr. Carrington would, would be more up on this, is, is the grapple truck to help move trees. I understand that we're kind of building up, you know, tree removal and, you know, last year we approved a purchase of a bucket truck, I think that was $165,000, and we hired another individual as a tree specialist to, to handle that. And I think elsewhere I saw that we're going to hire another person for Public Works to basically be involved in tree removal, since it takes more than one person to go, go to a site. Now I see we're having a purchase of a, of the grapple truck. And I'm just wondering, when trees are brought down, either by us or by the power company or by some outside contractor and they're safely stashed by the side of the road and at some point we have to remove them, isn't that the kind of thing? I'm just asking that, okay, once or twice a year you find a contractor who will, will just remove all those tree stumps and, you know, tree logs and, and move them to where you want them? But to pay $85,000 for a truck that's just used for that one purpose that, I'm guessing it's probably not going to be used all that much. Is this really, I missed my question, is this the most cost-effective way of, of doing a removal of heavy stuff that you don't have to do all that often, that maybe somebody could be hired to just, you know, do, do for us a couple of times a year when we have a, have some, you know, around town that need to be all moved at once?
Well, it wouldn't be a couple of times a year, it's oversimplified. We're taking down, I've been reporting how many trees we take down in every town manager's report, I don't think tonight I had a number, but every time I come before you, I say we took down another 30 to 40 trees every two weeks. And that has to be moved and the analysis on page 46 shows with the existing method, we have to use three employees and a large dump truck, a front-end loader, and if we use a grapple truck, that we would buy a used grapple truck, you know, it's going to pay for itself in a couple of years. And a contractor to pick up all this would cost me more than $85,000. And that, you know, it's, we wouldn't be coming to do this if it didn't make sense. This is a, you're using one piece of equipment instead of a couple, you're using one person instead of three, it just maximizes our ability to do other more important things.
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to defer to the good judgment of our professionals. I just have to ask, I wouldn't be doing my diligence if I didn't ask, but, you know, it does cost more than $85,000. We have to maintain a truck, it needs insurance, it needs brakes, it needs tires, batteries, exhaust, you know, it's more than $85,000, that's just the upfront cost, just saying.
Understood.
The, the other question I had, had to do with, with the parking garage. And, and I, I know that Director Corson answered several questions and, and I, I saw the photographs there on page 70. I understand the problem, you know, that we, we had lights in there that basically you can't get replacement parts for, it's, it's just ridiculous, you have to replace everything and, and it wants to replace the system. But I also saw where it said that, he said more than 10% of the lights are shot already. Well, I'm reading that and thinking that, that means 85% of them are still working. And just wondering whether we really need to, at this point, we replace them all? Because, you know, there may be other solutions with, if you have a, a light that's out here and another one is out, you know, 100 yards down, it's not like that parking garage is totally dark. You may go from one bay to the next and you, it's dim because you're relying on the light from 15 yards away, that's not a catastrophe. And then it seems that if you have two or three in a row that are, that are shot and you got to do something, I mean, you can get a, a cheap fixture like you would put in the hallway or a bathroom and, you know, put an incandescent bulb in it, you know, just, just bolt it into the old fixture. I mean, isn't there some other software solution, some other solution other than replacing the whole lighting system when over 80% of them are still, are still working?
Hi, this is Alan. Typically, you know, when you get a certain percent of lights every year, you're going to keep losing more percentage of lights. So this gives you an option to get everything the same at once. You could go at it where we replace the fixtures that are out, yes. And those fixtures, you can't, they do have to be, they got to meet certain requirements for being in a garage, so they got to be weatherproof, watertight. So there is a certain kind of fixture, fixture that you need for that.
Mr. Freud, you're muted, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, me, me and my remote here, whatever, the mouse. I, I understand that, I'm just, it just seems like a, it seems like a lot of money while at least some of the, a good, you know, overwhelming majority of the lights are still on. And I know, it just, it's just very frustrating to me when I, when I, when I see this, it's, it's a lot of money to have, to have to spend while you still have most of your lights working. I understand what you're saying, more of them are going to drop out because they're, the ones that are still there are, are that much older. Okay, I had a few concerns, something I need to...
Mr. Freud, may I suggest that if you want to change this line, that you make a motion to cut it?
I, I'd love... Well, I didn't know you would welcome motions like that, I kept hearing we're supposed to put this off.
At some, at some point, when we start to actually make these final decisions, if you think this should be reduced...
I, I might, you know, I, I don't want to monopolize the, the floor here, I appreciate your consideration. I just want to say, I'm, I'm raising these things now, people know where I stand on it, whether I will, whether I, whether I or my colleagues on the Republican side of the aisle are going to put these in the forms of motions or not, I don't know. Right now, the way I feel is, I've made my sentiments known, if the members of the dominant party feel that this has any, hasn't, that this has any purchase with them, then, then they, they would do it because, you know, you, you control everything when it comes to budget adoption. And I've never seen, I've never been inclined to, I've never seen where amendments we make or suggestions we make are adopted. I've, I've expressed my sentiments, if I thought there were two, two members of the majority party that would break ranks, but I've never seen that happen, so I, I don't know that...
You never know, you need to try it, Mr. Shaken.
This isn't my fir, this isn't my first rodeo, but I don't want to...
Not your first rodeo, but you never know, Mr. Shaken.
So if I can continue, I had a couple of other concerns. I, I, again, this isn't something I want flagged, you know, maybe, maybe I'll bring it up as an amendment, although probably not. it up as an amendment, although probably not. I'm not sure I think that, that we have to spend fifty thousand dollars on, on the swap shop. I mean, I know it's nice to have, but the town does not have to be in the, uh, in the, in the tag sale business. It's, to me, that's not a, a, a critical, um, expense that we have to incur. I'm not, so I don't feel kindly about that. And wrapping up here, just maybe two more items and, and thank you for your indulgence. Uh, on page fifty, I see there's a positioning and marketing plan, fifty thousand. You know I don't support these things. This is just money for consultants in the economic development brochure, um, you know, logo this and, and marketing brand that. To me, this is, this does not seem as something that we absolutely have to spend money on. And then there was something, one more thing. I noticed, um, on pages eighty-two and eighty-three of this packet, there was, um, photographs taken in a, some narrative about problems at the Discovery Depot where there's a hundred, looking, would need a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for, for a roof and thirty-one thousand dollars for dishwasher and kitchen exhaust. So you're looking at two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, um, of, of repairs at the Discovery Depot. I just wanted to say, I did not see that, uh, in this, in the C I P on pages forty-three and forty-four. Maybe it's there or maybe it was just shown, those, those pictures and the narrative on pages eighty-two and eighty-three were just shown as something coming up. So I was a little confused by that. And I was wondering if, um, Mr. Carrington or, or Director Treyan could, could explain that. Is that in the plan here or is this just a, a projection of what we need to do maybe next year or the year after?
I believe, um, Alan included things that are in the, the future five-year capital as well, things that need to be done. That is not proposed, um, in this budget.
Thank you very much for explaining that. I thought maybe I'd missed something. Thank you for that explanation. I'll just say as a final comment, um, I, just like I didn't, I, I also, I also don't feel, just like I don't feel we have to be in the gro-, in the tax sale business and need a swap shop. I, I'm sorry, I know, and this may not be a popular thing to say, but I also don't think we have to be in the daycare business. There are at least three other daycare, private daycare businesses in town. And, um, my feeling is if we just disposed of that property, that would suit me fine. Uh, but that's, that's probably a battle for another day. Mayor, I yield the floor and thank you and to the staff, thank you.
Mr. Shaken.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I'll start by saying, um, I, I appreciate David's point of view and I think, um, I think the budget process is, is very interesting every year and in, including seeing sort of where my colleagues' priorities and their way of thinking. It's always, it's always very interesting to me. I will say that if you may have picked up, I'm a process person and part of what that means to me is that we govern as a group by process. You have to have one. And, um, and I, I frankly don't, uh, agree with the argument that it's pointless to make motions because that is how, um, that's how we govern. We govern by, at the end of the day, making a motion and following the rules of procedure around that motion and then a group, uh, votes for it and a group votes against it. So, um, that certainly isn't the only philosophy, of course, but it's, it's not one that I agree with. And I would encourage all of my colleagues, regardless of party, to use this process as a way to ask questions and get, um, your ideas on the table. And then when we go to adopt a budget or make changes to the manager's budget as a group, to make your ideas in the form of motions. And, and talk to your colleagues about whether they will support your ideas or not and try to put those things together. It's not a one party versus another party, but I digress. On the budget as a whole, I think that, uh, this is a, by and large, a very good proposal from the manager. Um, I've learned a lot about it. What I would ask for is very simple piece of information or group of pieces of information from John and Sherry so that, um, I can be sort of prepared to, to make an amendment that I hope my colleagues will support in a few weeks. And that is to provide several examples, three, five, in that range, of things that you would recommend that we do to bring the council's budget in as a flat mill rate budget. So the budget that's proposed is a, a small increase in the town's mill rate and given the current situation and unknowns that we have in front of us, I, I am comfortable, most comfortable adopting a budget that is a zero mill rate increase. Um, I think that's the fiscally responsible thing to do. I think it's the thing that, the best thing that we can do, um, as a town to, to keep everyone's tax burdens as constant as we can, given that there was a revale this year. Things are gonna change for everyone. And I'd like to know, instead of figuring it out myself as someone who doesn't work day-to-day at Town Hall, I'd like to know from John and, and Sherry in the department heads, where are some places where they can recommend reducing the manager's proposal to get us to that point? And I'd like to see a few different options so that the council can make a choice rather than an up and down vote on a recommendation. So that's my simple request. I think that's where this budget needs to come out in the end. And I would love to see that as follow-up information for our meeting on the twenty-sixth so that it can be made in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sharon, I saw your hand first and then Mr. Freudman.
Um, I, maybe out of order now, but I just wanted to get factual information I couldn't find in the, in this proposed, um, said documents, what are we, we're continuing to add marginally to our reserve balance, correct? Is that correct?
So, yeah, um, the, yes, in the mill rate, um, proposed mill rate worksheet, there's an additional, I think it's a hundred and twenty-six thousand going into the reserve balance.
Well, I would just say I agree with, um, Mr. Shaken's request, but I wouldn't wanna make the cut in that amount of money because I think it's important as we face a very, very difficult couple of years ahead, that we maintain our reserve balance to protect ourselves from future problems.
Mr. Councilor.
Thank you. I just wanna reiterate, I mean, I think I agree with Ryan on that point. I think it's particularly important, um, and not only to maintain, but also frankly to increase. We're gonna, you know, we don't know yet what the needs will be in the next year or two. They could be, they'll certainly be more significant than they are now and they could be very significant. And the, one of the primary tools we have or any political entity has to deal with these things is money, uh, is, you know, what we call the rainy day fund, the surplus or whatever. Um, and I would think, you know, this is the time if we can not to cut that, but in fact to augment it if possible.
Any other questions, Mr. Freudman?
Yeah, I'd like to do, you know, just in response to what, um, Counselor Shaken said. I mean, he, he wants staff to now prioritize and come up with, I don't know, four or five different scenarios of maybe cut these or then another scenario, maybe cut those. And that's part of my frustration with this budget process. I think that we as the council are the ones that should be doing that. That's why I am frustrated that we don't, you know, wanna debate and make, and make some, some decisions here, you know, we're supposed, that's what we're supposed to do. They've made their suggestions. They've, they've proposed the spending. They've tried to prioritize things, but still would wanna throw everything in their lap and say, now, now you decide. And I think that's kind of like our job, but all right, um, you all, you know, the majority party decides. I'm just saying, that's part of my frustration. Mayor, is this an appropriate time to discuss the flagged items or, or not?
I just wanna point out to you guys that it's nine forty and, um, there is one more item on our agenda that, that requires some discussion. So there, I, I really wanna ask you to, um, well, actually, there's more than one. There, there are several more items on our agenda, but there's, uh, one that would, would be new to us. I think we should be using this particular discussion of the budget to request additional information if there is any. I don't want, I don't think we have the time tonight to actually go into debating the information that's in front of us. But if people want to ask for information of the staff for a future meeting, this would be the time to do it. Uh, I would also like to add, make a request that we get, this budget was put together in December, January. People in, on town staff are now talking about how to reopen schools, how to reopen Town Hall, how to reopen whatever. And one of the real issues is things like increased testing, um, uh, increased, uh, facilities changes in order to cope with adequate safe spaces, um, potential revenue losses. And I'm wondering if we need to ask for some additional information on reopening the town over the next year. That's my request. Uh, anybody else have requests for additional information? Mr. Shaken?
Well, it, no, but I wanted to just go back to what David had asked. I know it's late, but without rehashing the conversation we've had about these flagged items on April first, I, I think, I think this is a time to hear counselors' opinions about where the final budget should end up. So perhaps with the, I, I don't know, I feel like we've spent a lot of time in the process and this is the time to hear about flagged items and other things and we can make them in forms of motions on the twenty-sixth. I, I, without spending another forty-five minutes on things we've talked about a fair amount, I, I feel like this is the discussion time to do that.
Mr. Freudman, but would you like to add?
I thank you, Mayor, and I thank, um, Mr. Shaken for that. I, I really, I'm not planning on spending a lot of time on it. I just noticed that on page thirty-five, it's, it's noted that there were some flagged items and my name is, is beside them and I did talk, talk about them on, on April first. So I, I just wanted to use a moment to point out that, um, on the communication specialist position, I still feel as I did on April first, that maybe that's a position we could decide, uh, you know, not, not to have. That would be saving, so I haven't changed my, my opinion on that. On the second of the four items there, I, I had suggested a modest reshuffling of the monies we had in contributions to area agencies. I had suggested that three thousand dollars for veteran services be directed towards the Wyndham No Freeze Shelter. So that would bring, you know, veterans' services down from ten thousand to seven thousand and move the No Freeze Shelter, uh, contribution from the proposed one and a half thousand dollars, very little money, uh, bring that up to four and a half thousand. That was my suggestion then, that, that still stands. Uh, on the third one, on the, on the H R specialist position, I, I've rethought that I'm a little neutral on that. You know, maybe that amount of staffing is, is needed, so I'm kind of, you know, nu- neutral on that now. And as far as the fourth item, yeah, you know, we, in that position paper, police services, we're gonna increase by a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So I suggested we reduce the resident state trooper number from eight to seven. I still think we should consider that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Freudman, when you make your motion on the contributions to area agencies, I'll be happy to second it. Uh, the others, when you make those motions, we'll see how they go, but you got my support on that one. Any further requests for information on flagged items or requests? I'm hearing an echo of my voice. Where is that coming from? And Mr. Kachtnerberger?
I'm just, I, 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 I'm not sure if it would generate a list or not, but in looking quickly at some of the Board of Education things, just to see if there are items such as any, uh, physical plan improvements and things that we could either delay or, or not improve at all simply because hopefully, at least in my mind, the referendum, you know, that, um, I'm sorry, but hopefully that, uh, we won't need them because a new school will be built on time. There was one or two items in terms of technology and improving infrastructure and it wasn't clear in my mind whether that was necessary or not given, you know, the new school. Thank you.
And Miss Davis, what?
I don't have a question. I just wanna take a moment to, to say how helpful this additional information is for me for processing, uh, what, what's been asked for. And then I greatly appreciate the time. I know you're all super, super busy now, that staff put into this document.
Uh, Mr. Bruder agrees. But he agrees silently. Do you have any comments or questions, Mr. Bruder? Okay, Mr. Freudman's hand is up.
Yes, thank you for this additional opportunity. I, I heard, um, Counselor Kachtnerberger say something about, you know, looking at some of the expenses involving the, uh, Board of Education. And, uh, you know, you, you might recall that two years ago, I, I suggested that we close the Goodwin School, um, which, which I estimated would, would save us a million and a half dollars a year. And that proposal never made it onto an agenda item. Now we know we're gonna close the Goodwin School in three, four years because of a new elementary school. And I think that the, and, and the enrollment is now down even a little bit more. And, uh, certainly, you know, with enrollment down to K through four to the mid-five hundreds, uh, obviously, you know, Vinton and Southeast could, could handle that. And if we closed Goodwin this fall, not only would we save a million and a half dollars, but we would see what it, what it's like to ship students, to bus students from the north end of town to the south end of town. You know, they could be divvied up, some between Vinton and some between Southeast. The ones going down to Vinton, that would probably shouldn't be such a big deal, little longer route on thirty-two, but it would be a real good test to see what it's like to bring school buses through store center on one ninety-five in the morning. I could, since now we know we're gonna close that school anyway, I see no reason why we wanna keep that school open. But, you know, I gave up on that battle. I tried it two years ago and there was no interest. Maybe now there would be since we know it's gonna close anyway and we would save a million and a half, easy, just on staffing, utilities, maintenance. That's all I had. I, I, and I probably, like with most of these other ideas, I've floated out there. It, it's very like, more likely than not that I won't be bringing these up as amendments because nothing, nothing people from the minority party bring up is ever, is ever, you know, ever carries the day. So I'm not gonna, not interested in just proposing something to see you get defeated all the time. And I probably will feel the same way on June fourth. Maybe I'll change my mind in a couple, but most likely not. Thank you very much.
David, are you gonna make me make the motion to shift the money? I mean, it's your idea. All right, Mr. Shaken, you had your hand up. That was not, that was, no, okay. Any further questions on the budget? All right, Ms. Treyan and Mr. Carrington, I think you have our sense of where we want to go and what kinds of information we need. Um, thank you very much for what we, what you've given us. I know this is hard to do, but, uh, it's been extraordinarily useful. All right, are we ready to proceed? The next item on the agenda is a grant opportunity for a Connecticut Department of Agriculture Farm Viability Grant. Now, my, my guess is that part of this is, um, well, Mr. Carrington, who, who will discuss this with just particular grant application with us?
I actually can't remember who was supposed to take the lead after this long meeting.
This page, perhaps?
It was Linda or Pat.
It's Pat.
Okay, hi, Pat. Why are you keeping waiting so long?
Pat, are you there?
I am here. I just had a hard time getting my camera and my mic on for some reason. And, uh, also, um, we are, we're joined, um, by, um, I'm just checking to make sure Jeff is still on. Jeff Mark, who has been, um, extremely helpful and has been, um, very involved, uh, with the, with the Taste of Mansfield program here in town. And it's an exciting opportunity that we have to write a grant to help us bring, uh, to help, uh, two groups of people in town. One is One is our local, our farmers, um, our, our, our local growers. And the other is, uh, people who might be at food risk, um, you know, um, you know, as well. So this grant would allow us to, um, develop a program where we could actually get both through purchase of, um, farm cu- uh, coupons for the farmer's market as well as some potential for some, um, you know, um, monthly or biweekly boxed, uh, foods from the farm that could be distributed to low-income individuals, um, as well as develop some, um, plans to, uh, do better advertising, um, and, um, you know, get out our local growers better. So Jeff, I believe you're online as well. And, um, she's really been kind of one of the leads on the project. But it is a cooperative project between the town and the, um, you know, and these, uh, the other interested pardon, parties and organizations. And my staff is very, very excited about the potential of bringing fresh local products, um, to people in need in town. So Jeff, would you like to add?
Um, I think you summarized it pretty clearly. It's just an opportunity to build, um, a, a new aspect to Taste of Mansfield where we are, um, which we've always been trying to get to, but it gives us a chance to focus our out, uh, um, those with limited income.
Um, there, there, does anybody have any further questions of staff on what this actually does and what, what the implications are? Mr. Freudman?
I just have a question. Is there any evidence that people who are on SNAP, uh, are, are, are going to the, um, farmer's market there on Saturday afternoons and Town Hall? It doesn't look like that demographic to me.
Well, what I would say, I, um, one of the things that we do know, um, Councilman Freudman, is that, um, our programs that bring fresh produce, uh, including our Food Share Program that happens are incredibly popular and that food pantries that have a lot of processed shelf-ready things are less desirable. Um, and of course, you know, certainly fresh produce, uh, fro- fresh products have better nutrition. Um, and, uh, again, when those funds go into our local farmers, it also helps our local economy as well. So we hear from numerous people that we work with that their preference would be fresh pro- fresh products and local products. It's just the costs and the availability isn't there for many of our people who are, you know, nutritionally at risk.
Yes, yes, I understand that, Director Snyder. But, um, you know, the, what's, what's being proposed here is that it's going to says create new capacity to process SNAP payments for purchases at the stores farmer's market. I don't see, I don't get the impression that the people, you know, driving up to the stores farmer's market are the people, uh, who are in, 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 in tough financial situation and are qualified for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. And as far as the, uh, local farmers, more for helping local farmers. But as far as I'm, I, I looked into this one time and was told only two of the vendors that go to the farmer's mar- the stores farmer's market are from Mansfield. The others are from other, are, are from other towns. Um, look, I, I, and, and I think this, I mean, I'll, I'll just mention this now because this will probably be put in the form of a motion. But I think it's this kind of thing that's going, there's a, there's a match from the town and, and you're trying to use, uh, salaries as counting towards the match. To me, this setting up a program for SNAP payments that probably would never be used at that venue, this, this is an example of how you're just complicating and adding more gears to government, more moving parts. You know, it's, it's just, I, I just don't like it for that reason. You know, I don't think it really would help that many people, but it will complicate government and probably add to the cost of running government in town.
Well, and, and, uh, you know, I, I respectfully disagree with your statement because I have very direct contact with the people that we were talking about in serving with this. And I can absolutely tell you that they would be very excited and are very excited when they can access fresh pro- fresh, fresh produce, local produce. Um, and again, it's a program that both helps the people who get the best possible food, local food, as well as it helps our farm community that is going to be struggling or is struggling like everybody else right now during this economic time. So I think this is a very timely, um, program. Um, and our, my department is very, um, uniquely set up to already have access to these individuals who, um, who would benefit for this, from this program.
Don't they have to go to the farmer's market to, to benefit for me?
No, there's a number of different ways. One of them, yes, is being able to use the, the, um, the gift certi- gift certificates as well as SNAP benefits that would be made available. But also, we would be able to do some of the, um, things like we do with Food Share, only have the boxed produce and, um, items that come from local farms that would be distributed in a similar way that, as some of our other food programs. So.
I, I, I would point out that that last, the last Food Share Program attracted 150 families to the partnership of the U.S. So there are definitely families who are eligible and who would, uh, who would look, who are looking for sources of fresh food. Um.
But they're already getting SNAP anyway.
Um, they're getting a certain amount of SNAP. This would make it, 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 this would expand their ability to use SNAP for fresh food. It would expand, expand the ability for those farmers to accept SNAP as well. Uh, Mr. Bruder, I saw your hand first and then Ms. Bertholot.
I was just hoping to make the motion for this as before us and, and then start having the, the discussion.
All right, uh, motions can be made at any time. Would you make the motion?
Yep, I'd like to move effective May 11th, 2020 to authorize the submission of the Farm Viability Grant Application to the Connecticut Department of Agriculture.
Is there a second, second to Ms. Bertholot? Uh, this, now discussion of the program?
Yeah, and just in support of my motion, for some of the reasons that we've already said, I, I wholeheartedly support, um, any time that we can allow for individuals who already are receiving SNAP benefits to, uh, increase their, their options. And certainly, uh, the, the farmer's market is, is a great place that not only supports Mansfield businesses, but local businesses, as we've discussed. And it's, uh, you know, unprocessed. It's, it's something that is, um, you know, grown here. And, and for those reasons, I support this motion.
Ms. Bertholot?
Um, I also think this is fantastic. And thank you so much for bringing it to us. I, I wholeheartedly, uh, support this. And I'll just throw in, so much has already been said, but that a farmer's market is a place to build community. And we want to expand how we think about our community and who is part of our community. And we should always be thinking about ways of, of making it a nurturing, friendly, helpful place. So thank you for this.
Mr. Shaken?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also support this. This is a great idea. I will just add, um, sort of the Council of Freudman's comments earlier. Um, you know, I appreciate how perceptive he is about the clientele at the, at the farmer's market. But you never know who in our community is receiving SNAP benefits. And so, um, I'm not sure which demographic you could pick out from walking around the farmer's market or not. But, um, we do know that there are SNAP recipients across our community. I will say, um, that, the, especially the piece of this or that has to do with capacity for vendors at the farmer's market to accept SNAP, um, as well as, uh, cost sharing. Um, I worked at Hartford many years ago, uh, next to a building that ran a farmer's market, an apartment building that ran a farmer's market every week. Um, and part of the benefit that was existed at that farmer's market um, was a doubling of your SNAP benefit. So a dollar in SNAP was worth $2 at that farmer's market. Um, it was right in the courtyard of, of that building. And just the processing capability for farmers was huge. The ability to have the machine to take SNAP dollars. Um, it wouldn't have been able to exist, um, before that. And the people, obviously, who lived in that apartment complex and lived in the neighborhood, who shopped there every week and it was packed, um, wouldn't have been able to use their SNAP benefits, had that capacity and had existed. I'm not sure if it was years ago, part of this grant program or not. But, um, I think it's a great addition to, to our farmer's market tonight. And I hope we're successful in our application.
Further comment? Going, going, gone. All right, I'm going to call for a vote. Um, will all those in favor of this motion raise your hand? I see Mr. Bruder, Mr. Kochenberger, Mr. Schuren, Ms. Bertholot, and myself. Would those who are opposed, please raise their hand? Mr. Freudman? Um, Mr. Fatoni, how are you voting?
No.
No, uh, Mr. Ossberger? No. Okay, thank you. Uh, the motion is passed. And we are ready to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the appointment of an auditor. Mr. Kochenberger, I believe this came out of your committee.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we talked about this at tonight, we had a finance committee meeting tonight and discussed this. And while we, I think, all agreed along with, um, Finance Director, uh, Sherri Trahan, that, uh, we, you know, at various times, certainly opening up the process to competitive bid, at particular times will, um, that may not be, uh, either necessary or appropriate, and this is for next year, perhaps. But for tonight, I want, we certainly all agree that we appointing Blum Shapiro makes, was a good au- it made sense. And I would like to read the following motion, which is on page 191 in the packet, which is, I move effective May 11th, 2020, to appoint Blum Shapiro on the company PC as the auditor firm for the fiscal year, uh, 2019, '20.
This, this comes from a committee, so it doesn't require a second. Um, would you care to discuss the motion? Mr. Kochenberger?
I'll simply note that, um, this was mentioned a few minutes ago, uh, that, um, Sherri, our Director Trahan noted that Blum Shapiro has done an excellent job over the last few years and she certainly supports their, um, retaining them for this current year.
Any further comment? All those in favor of the mo- Mr. Shaken, you are shaking your head.
Do you want to do unanimous consent on this one?
Well, will, is, does anybody object to the motion? Hearing no objection to the motion, I find that there is unanimous consent to the motion. Uh, Mr. Kochenberger, you have the next item as well, the transfer of uncollected taxes. Mr. Ossberger?
Oh.
Oh, wait, Mr. Kochenberger has the floor because he's presenting the motion.
I'll yield, uh, if it's a question under prior motion or?
Mr. Ossberger, would, would you, what would you like to say?
Well, I, I did have a question on the prior motion. I, I would, I would, I would only like to say that, um, in my experience with, um, utilizing outside processing or outside sources, granted, Blum Shapiro has been with us for a number of years, but, um, I would posit that we would maybe perhaps want to look at other people, uh, for looking at it with a different set of eyes going forward. Uh, just that, uh, different eyes have different ways of looking at things. And just because we've, uh, used them for so many years doesn't necessarily mean we should continue to use them for so many years.
Mr. Kochenberger, would you like to comment on this? I know the committee discussed it.
Yes, um, I think all of us agree. Uh, and now particularly if, uh, Al Fatoni wants to, you know, talk about this. But I think all of us agree that it is, you know, uh, good practice for a number of reasons to periodically go out to rebid, um, even if there, we are satisfied with the current vendor, both in terms of having a different set of eyes, look at the, um, look at the budget and, and, uh, finances, as well as, um, seeing, you know, about price and equality. I think that is something we can, you know, we would consider for next year. We would need to, uh, prob- probably open that up for bidding, I think, uh, early in, uh, spring or winter, rather, of 2021, if we're going to do so. However, because there'll be both, uh, a new town manager, a new finance director, uh, with Sherri Trahan's, uh, recommendation, which I agree with, although we did not need to take any vote, was that we not do a significant transition at next year simply for those reasons. That'll be, uh, because of the, with new people and, uh, general satisfaction with Blum Shapiro. If that's the, you know, if that's the decision we make, uh, several, you know, next year, then certainly I agree that we should, we, you know, open it up for bidding for the year after, for the reasons stated.
Thank you. Um, the next item on our agenda is.
Can I, can I just make one point of clarification? What you're doing is appointing them for this fiscal year end. So they're going to audit 1920. It's the, the audit that's going to happen this summer. So you will still have the opportunity to do something for next year. If you choose to go out to bid, I would look to go out to bid in February or March. You could do that in, in 20, February of 21. But you're, you're not appointing for the 2021 audit. You're appointing for the 1920 audit.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, sir.
Okay, Mr. Kochenberger, will you do the tax issue, please?
I'm sorry, I can do that.
I'm hearing an echo again. I don't know, somebody's got a second phone going or something because I'm picking up a second, then, second sound. That's better. Mr. Kochenberger, the uncollectible taxes.
Oh, yes, okay. So, um, this is on page 193 of our, of our packet. And, uh, I'll move, or I'll read the motion. I move effective May 11th, 2020 to transfer $30,277, uh, $71 in uncollected property taxes to the Mansfield Property Tax Suspense Book as recommended by the Collector of Revenue. Uh, and that amount actually, I'm sorry, is $30,277.71. And that's again on page 193.
Okay, does it require a second? So would you speak to your motion?
Yes, just briefly, this is, uh, we, uh, required to do this every year. Uh, this, this number is actually somewhat lower than average. Our Director Trahan at our finance committee meeting earlier tonight, Director Trahan noted that it's often in the 40s and $50,000. Uh, most of this unsuspended is results from personal income, uh, personal property taxes, unpaid personal property taxes, and that we also have had some success in collecting this amount even after it's put on suspension.
Uh, any further discussion? Anybody else have a comment? Mr. Freudman?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, once again, I have to, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm sorry that, again, a motion is put on right away. Sometimes, you know, I think we, by our rules, we kind of.
Speak to the motion because it's 10 o'clock.
If, if there are, uh, questions of staff, which I, which I do have, but I'll do it now, even though the motion's on the table already. Um, and perhaps Director Trahan is best positioned to, to explain this. Um, having, having to do with the uncollected bills for, you know, trash and, um, recyclable pickup. It's, it's a bit frustrating. Um, and I, I can see where most of these are relatively small sums. So I get it, people are moving and, you know, the trash gets picked up a while and then they leave and all that. But there are a couple of entries that concern me. Um, on, on page 195, um, right there around the middle of the page, kind of in a, almost in a loan category by itself, there's, there's one, one entry there from one person for $1,185. I was wondering, how did the bill get that big without service being, being stopped, uh, earlier? And, and then, uh, a similar kind of question, so I'll just ask them together. Um, towards the bottom of page 196, you see a particular business there and it starts with the word, with the name Enviro. Um, six entries there totaling $2,300. So how are they? So how are they going on month after month, a year after year, whatever it is, building up that kind of a bill without the pickup service being stopped by our town?
We have a, we have a process in place, and we also make use of a collection agency. I can, I don't have the specifics on the ones that you're looking at, I can pull that, but typically what will happen, for example, like motor vehicles or the trash, I'm getting a feedback too here, I'm not sure.
Somebody has a second phone going or something that's picking up.
I think it's gone.
Okay. I think that's it.
So the trash pickup, we haven't typically moved these off to suspense in the past, but it's a way for us to really weed through and make sure we're keeping these accounts clean. The trash, there's a process for when service is turned off, when it gets turned back on. So in terms of those specific instances, I would have to see what happened, and I'm happy to do that for you. But we also make use of a collection agency. But if someone moves up with these bills left unpaid, it's very difficult for us to go back and collect. So I'm happy to look up those couple of instances for you. Typically, it would not get that high. So there has to be something specific for that account that you said was over a couple thousand dollars. It would not get, typically get that high because we shut off service. It could be that it was an apartment complex or something like that. I'll have to look at what it was and get that for you, but normally the service is turned off.
Okay, just as a follow-up, I want to say I appreciate that, and perhaps you could explain that when you have more details to the council as a whole, because I don't know, it seems like some people are going on, you know, quarter after quarter before the service gets cut off, and I'm just wondering, whoever in town, you know, is managing, you know, acting as the interface with the company that picks up the trash and recyclables, why are they going this many billing cycles before the service has just continued? But you said you would, I think I understood you to say you're trying to get that information. It seems like this, you know, some of these accounts have gone too, on too long and gotten too big.
Mr. Freudman? Mr. Freudman, the business that you referred to is a real estate listing, not a trash pickup listing?
Okay.
It's trash, Madam Mayor, both of them, trash recycle for that one on page 195, which is $1,185. And for the six entries there from Enviro Enterprises, oh, that was...
No, anything.
Yeah, how did that get big? Is that real estate taxes? How, what was that, six years of not paying?
It looks more like motor vehicle taxes.
It's at the bottom of that column.
It's at the bottom, so those are motor vehicle.
MV regular. On the page 197, David.
Yeah, it's motor vehicle.
Okay, so there were a couple of big, there was a couple of big accounts for trash that I was wondering how they got that big. There's also one for $590 for trash on page 196. I didn't mention that before, but it's there, about eight lines from the top. And yes, those other six are for motor vehicles, so I don't know if that means there were six vehicles or they just stopped paying on them. I don't know.
Yes, there would have been multiple vehicles.
For members of the council, may I make a suggestion that you get, that when you get this, these reports and you have questions that you develop over the weekend, it would be very useful if you shot your questions directly to the town manager or to Ms. Trahan, so that the answers would be ready for you on the night of the meeting. It's just, it's difficult to have a motion in front of us, which we need to act on, and still you have, we have these little niggly questions, which don't really go to the substance of the motion, but they are little niggly questions. It would be really useful to have that question, the request made in advance. So the motion is on the floor to adopt, to move these accounts to the suspense book. Is there anybody else who wishes to ask a question or make a comment? All those in favor, is there anybody who opposes this motion? All right, I'm going to rule it's been adopted unanimously. Mr. Kochenberger, you have one more piece of business. It's the adoption of the financial statements, and the motion is on page 203.
Yeah. All right, I guess we can certainly, you know, discuss this with Sherri, but I think it's, but after I put the motion on the floor, which I will do now, so I move effective May 11, 2020, to accept the financial statements dated March 31, 2020. And then the financial statements, which we did before. We reviewed this in finance committee and then had no particular issues.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, I think we can move to a vote. Is there anybody opposed to the adoption of the financial statements of March 31, 2020? Hearing no objection, they are adopted unanimously. The next item on the agenda is reports of council committees. Do any council committees have reports? Mr. Kochenberger, do you have anything further to sign here?
Only, no, well, one thing, just that Parks and Recreation, Representative Sherri Trahan, will be presenting, presumably, I think, by the next meeting, are discussing and planning for the community center deficit. And we decided it won't, it doesn't make sense to go through finance initially, but this is something that we can consider as the town council as a whole.
Thank you. Personnel?
We've got nothing.
Committee and committee?
We'll be meeting this week, Wednesday, at 4:30, to hold a round of interviews or interview for at least one, the public health board of directors. And then we're looking to get back on track with the rest of applications. We've been very appreciative of everyone, all the volunteers who have submitted applications. We haven't forgotten you. It's just very hard to, you know, with the limited amount of staff and the need for the technology that we haven't been able to hold a regular meeting, but we're looking to get back on track next month fully, if, you know, provided everything goes smoothly.
Mr. Freudman? Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor. Just had a, I'm not sure I understood Councilor Bruder's comment, at the meeting that you're going to hold this month, it's the interview for just one committee, and I forgot which one you said it was.
The order directors for the Eastern Highlands Health District.
Okay, and that's it? The rest will be done later months, I guess?
In June.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. That takes care of our committees. There are no ad hoc committees functioning. Anybody have comments on departmental and advisory committee reports? Petitions, requests, and communications? Any comments on those? Future agendas? Any requests for future agendas? I think we have our work cut out for us. The next thing on the agenda is a motion to adjourn. Do I hear such a motion? Mr. Shaken? Mr. Bruder? So move and second it. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand or sign off, whatever. Goodbye, good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Stay safe.
Bye.
Thank you.